Good morning. Let me get settled here, sorry. All right, and we're gonna call the Tuesday, March 5th, Commission Meeting to Order. We're gonna start with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders and members of the Armed Forces, followed by the invocation by Mr. Wesley Davis, our Indian River County Property Appraiser, and the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Moss. If everybody would please stand.
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity that we have to live in such a magnificent and spectacular community. We know that that doesn't happen by accident. We know that happens by leadership. We know that happens by your wisdom, your guidance, and your divine intervention. May we use those that today in this meeting to protect this place for the future and to keep it a spectacular and divine place. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in pledging allegiance to our beloved nation. Special thank you to our veterans in the office. I see Mayor Dodd of Sebastian, who's a veteran, Mrs. Johansson, President of the neighbor association, who's a veteran, and of course, our county administrator.
Pledgeance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Commissioners. All right, um, we do need to delete item 5B from the agenda. We have rescheduled that for April 9th, which is the presentation of the Boys and Girls Club Junior of the Year and Youth of the Year. They had a conflict for SAT prep, so I think that's a good reason not to be here. Yeah. Um, is there any other additions or deletions to the agenda?
The Chair move approval.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we will move on to proclamations and presentations. Today, we have a presentation of proclamation designating March 2024 as a month celebrating March for Meals. Is... Hi, how are you? All right, Ms. Miller, if you want to come on down, I'll read the proclamation. This is a proclamation designating March 2024 as a month celebrating the Older Americans Act Nutrition Program. Whereas, on March 22nd, 1972, President Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 to include a national nutrition program for individuals 60 years and older. For more than 50 years, this landmark law has helped to fund community-based organizations like Meals on Wheels, and it is still the only federal program designed specifically to meet the nutritional and social needs of older adults. And whereas, each year Meals on Wheels programs from across the country join together for the March for Meals Awareness Campaign to celebrate its success and garner the support needed to ensure these critical programs can continue to address food insecurity and malnutrition, combat social isolation, enable independence, and improve health for years to come. And whereas, Meals on Wheels programs in Indian River County have served our community admirably for 50 years. Volunteers for Meals on Wheels are the backbone of the program, delivering nutritious meals to seniors who are at significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also caring concern and attention to their welfare. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that March 2024 is designated as a month celebrating the Older Americans Act Nutrition Program, and the Board urges every community member to take this month to honor our Meals on Wheels programs, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Adopted this 5th day of March 2024 and signed by all five county commissioners. And Ms. Miller, I just want to say thank you for bringing this forward. I was a volunteer for Meals on Wheels for many, many years, and what this proclamation states is absolutely true. Many of those seniors depend on, on the food, but they also depend on just the checking in and the social aspect of having somebody come to their door every day. A lot of times, that's, that's the only kind of check-in that they get, and, you know, being able to address those needs as well as the food. And I know you have the congregate sites also, which is a great social opportunity for seniors to get a nutritious meal, but also to catch up with friends and things like that. And I think on Wednesday, some of us are going, well, tomorrow, to volunteer and deliver for Meals on Wheels for March for Meals, so that'll be fun.
Thank you, Chairman Adams. I appreciate that.
Oh, come on, we'll take a picture. We'll take a picture and then you can, you know, verify that you were here. Thank you so much.
Yeah, if you'd like to say something.
Karen did send me with a few remarks, if I may, and I have, I will abbreviate because, Chairman, you have hit some of the high points that are so critically important about this program. First of all, in your, in your opening remarks, you did mention that Senior Resource Association is celebrating its 50th year of service to Indian River County this, this year, and the 50th anniversary of Meals on Wheels in Indian River County. So we're very proud of that. In Karen's absence, I am Liz Bruner. I'm Vice President of Philanthropy, and Karen actually is at March for Meals today as we speak, so she sends her regards and her gratitude for this recognition. It's so important to call attention to the needs of our seniors. March is the time of year when we join with thousands of Meals on Wheels programs across the country to raise awareness of the plight of seniors in our community. The hunger, the food insecurity, the isolation that a lot of us don't see on a regular basis. So we're especially grateful that you all have and continue to take the time to see the needs of those in our community by participating in Community Champions Week. Today and tomorrow, we're greeting guests at Vero Beach location, and then on Thursday, we will have our March for Meals activities in Sebastian, and we are welcoming guests there. So anyone who is interested, who has not already signed up, is welcome to reach out to us after this brief program. Just a couple of notes. In 2023, we served more than 106,000 meals to seniors in this community who need help with meals. They need Monday through Friday hot meals, weekend meals, and, as you said so well, that human contact that our volunteers provide. We have, on any given day, another 350 seniors on the waitlist for Meals on Wheels, and 10 new seniors join that list every month. So it's, it's an ongoing challenge, and we're grateful for your support in battling that. Sadly for so many of our seniors, it is the only meal of the day they have, as well as the only human contact they have until the volunteer arrives the next day. So it is difficult for many of us to imagine living in that kind of isolation, and we're grateful that we have 250 wonderful volunteers who enable us to deliver 450-plus meals every day and to make that connection so that our seniors know that they're not forgotten in this community. We'd like to take a moment to share a brief impact video with you, Kim, if you would help me out. Thank you.
My parents, back then, were getting sicker and sicker. I decided, you know, it's time to go look after them. And so I started looking around, and I sold this apartment, these apartments. They were only $575. I've been here eight years, and the rent is now almost $1,200. Take half of my pay. I have lights, phone, cable, you know, I have a truck. It's paid off, but I have insurance on it. I have almost nothing left. And I have prostate cancer. I've lost two wives. So I'm here all alone. I was already living on a tight budget, and all of a sudden, I just didn't have enough food to eat. I lost 10 pounds. And Meals on Wheels was magical. They came to the rescue. They brought food. That day, I'm really grateful that Meals on Wheels is available, that Meals on Wheels is here to help people. They helped me. You know, it's like a family. You know, I look forward to seeing them every day. Meals on Wheels is a lifesaver.
As John said, Meals on Wheels is a lifesaver, and we could not do this important work without your support. The matching funds that Indian River County provides to our program that enables us to draw down all the available state and federal dollars enables us to nourish folks like John with, with food, to nourish their bodies, their hearts, their minds, keep them connected with the community, and we're very grateful for your continuing support. We simply must, as you said, Chairman, continue to mitigate senior food isolation and food insecurity. We have to continue to enable their independence, to improve the health of those in our community, and keep this up for years to come. As I said, today, tomorrow, and Wednesday, excuse me, Thursday, we are handling March for Meals, and we would welcome anyone to join us at that activity. So again, if you are interested in signing up, please let me know, and thank you so much for recognizing Meals on Wheels and Senior Resource Association.
And I'm just gonna touch on two things and then make a shameless plug for you that you didn't mention. Meals on Wheels also has a program for emergency meals for seniors that may have had a medical emergency and are coming home from the hospital and are unable to cook for themselves. You can call, and I think it's 30 days worth of meals will be delivered, delivered for those seniors that are recovering. And one of the reasons is, if you're recovering from something, you need that nutrition and those, that food to help you in the recovery process. They also found after a couple of years that some of the seniors were giving their food to their pets. You know, their pets are one of the social things that they have, that their companions were very important to them, but that was kind of missing the point of the Meals on Wheels. So they also have a program where they will bring pet food to those seniors that have pets that aren't able to feed them, and I think that's a wonderful thing, and they partner with some of our other nonprofits in the community to do that. And then lastly, a shameless plug for Meals on Wheels, they always need volunteers, whether it's one day a week, five days a week, an hour here, two hours there, either preparing the meals or delivering them. They could always use the extra help. So if you guys have any extra time out there, please give them a call. What they do in the community is fantastic, and it really is a lifeline to a lot of our seniors, and we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, the next item we have is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 9th, as well as the meeting of January 23rd.
The Chair move approval of both?
All right, I have a motion, and I will second that. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. There's a couple of informational items. Of course, our venue event calendar, there's all sorts of fun stuff going on, and high on my list for that is the Firefighters' Fair and the livestock show and auction. So that's where I will be next week if anybody needs me, under the barn. Ten, ten days of fun. All right, consent agenda.
Madam Chair. Since we have the Mayor of Sebastian here, may we invite him to talk about the Sebastian Centennial? It's an important event for our county.
Sure. Do we need to add that officially to the agenda? We can just invite him. Okay. Come on up, Mayor Dodd. How are you doing today?
I'm doing well. I didn't come intending to speak, but I will. The bags that I passed around are swag bags from our centennial. It's the 100th year, 100th centennial anniversary for the city of Sebastian. December the 8th is the actual day of the centennial. We're gonna have a special parade, fireworks, Clydesdales are gonna be here.
The Clydesdales?
The Clydesdales with their stagecoach and their wagons, and they're gonna park in the park and let the kids come in and play with them. And I don't think they'll let them play with the horses, but they'll certainly let them climb on the, on the wagon and so forth. We are gonna celebrate this at least once a month all throughout the year. The next celebration is our, what used to be called a Shrimp Fest. Now it's a Craft Brew Holo Baloo or something like that, and that's on the weekend of the 15th. It's a nice event, three-day event in Sebastian. We'll have a special tent with centennial swag and so forth that we'll pass out. The calendar of events is actually listed. There's a centennial magazine that's in your bag, and it's the second or third page in that magazine. It's also on the Sebastian website, citiesebastian.org. We welcome anybody to come out, celebrate the centennial with the city, and help us celebrate our 100th years in, in... 87 people voted to create a city in 1924. There were 115 people, I think, in the city at that date. The numbers are actually in a magazine and are probably much more correct than what I'm saying, but it was a small number of people that voted to do that. So we're very proud of where we've come from then to today. So, thank you.
Thank you, and good luck with the centennial. We look forward to all the fun events you'll be having and the history you'll be sharing. It's fantastic.
Yes. The, the magazine is actually a historical record of the city. It starts at the beginning and walks through with founding families and fathers and who's there, and it gives a great history of the city. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, consent agenda. Is anybody wishing to pull anything from consent?
Yes, Madam Chair. AT, as in tomahawk.
T as in Tom. Okay. Anything, anybody else? Anybody from the public wishing to pull any item from consent? Seeing none?
The Chair move approval as amended.
I will be happy to second that. Thank you so much. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Moss, item 8T.
Yes, thank you. Item 8T has to do with Indian River Boulevard improvements, and that with regard to pedestrian and bicycle access, improvements in the utility relocation project. And my question is, this came up a couple of years ago, when this came before us originally, which was May 10th, 2022, the width of the bike lanes, because seven feet now is considered safe, and under seven feet is pushing the, the safety limits. And I had a question regarding that. With it, what are the, what are, well, what would be the width of the bike lanes at this point? I didn't see it in the backup material.
Yes, Commissioner, I did speak with Public Works, our acting Public Works Director, Sean, and he's here, but they are the five feet that were previously approved, and although they do seek to do the larger seven feet, subject to the availability of the right-of-way, there's some conflicts, there's some other utilities there, so they cannot do the, the seven feet here. They're going with what was approved previously, the five feet.
Yeah, I was hoping with all the, the different utility conflicts that were being addressed here, that perhaps some of them had to do with the width of the bike lane.
Sean Leeskey, Acting Public Works Director, and unfortunately, I was not here during this time, but my understanding of the situation was that the width of the right-of-way did not, it was not wide enough to accommodate seven-foot bike lanes, that there was some drainage issues, other kind of conflicts that would not allow the seven-foot bike lanes, and therefore, we put in what we could, and five-foot was, was what we could accommodate, given the, the width of the right-of-way and the other conflicts, and that's gonna be, how we continue to proceed is with the five-foot bike lanes.
So, but in the future, we'll be considering seven-foot, correct?
And it was my understanding, as, as projects come up and new projects, and provided we have the, the right-of-way width to accommodate seven-foot bike lanes, that will certainly be something that is, is evaluated, and, and as long as we can accommodate that, I believe that was the plan, was to...
And if you, if you know, I think in, on other projects, we've gone to six-foot widths for bike lanes.
I think the goal is to try to get, to get the seven-foot where we can, but where the design precludes us from doing that for multiple different reasons. As big as we possibly can is what we strive for. This particular project, as I recall, our last discussion was just very, very constrained, but Public Works and the MPO, when we design these projects and work with even DOT and those types of things, have advocated for the larger bike lanes. I think they've heard that message loud and clear throughout multiple meetings that we've had on this. So I think this project is just kind of finishing up that ongoing project and then moving forward as we can, because I know you've been an advocate for that, and so has everybody else, between the bike lanes and the pedestrian access, is important to have those complete streets.
Yeah, because I think, I think in the last two years, since 2022, and we've all seen it, if anything, the traffic has increased and we see more accidents, not, not less.
Certainly. And as we can accommodate, I know that that's the intent, is to evaluate, and if we can accommodate the seven-foot, is to, to approach it with seven-foot bike lanes. And I think that's the, the standard that, that people are trying to achieve. It's just sometimes there's, there's constraints that you, you know, you just can't get around. There's, there's canals, and there's only so much right-of-way, and, and when you're dealing with a constraint like that, you can, you can accommodate what you can accommodate. So, and that's kind of what happened in this instance.
Right. The other option is we could go out and do eminent domain and try to purchase right-of-way and triple the cost of the road project, which isn't, so I think our, our policy has been where it's, where we can do it, do it. If we can't, this particular road project, as you know, is very constrained, so I think getting five-foot is, we're lucky in that regard, to be honest.
Yeah, if I remember right, it was because of the constraints of the Boulevard, the, you know, the canals on both sides, because the road is built way up, and we didn't have the right-of-way. There were some other issues with that, and I remember clearly, we all, like Commissioner, the Chairman said, we all advocated that, but we were happy at the time with the...
Just out of curiosity, with the utility conflicts, how, how do you address that? What, what is, or what are some of the, as, for example, what are some of the utility conflicts, and how do you address that?
Well, I mean, utility conflicts would be if there's a conflict with, you know, other utility agencies such as cable or electrical. Often, there's conflicts with drainage, and so drainage boxes, culverts, things like that, and you have to do deflections, and you have to build around it or under it, or, or you just have to kind of address what you can, given what's, what's currently in the ground. You know, there's often kind of different types of things that you have to work around, depending upon who's been there prior and, and put in, in infrastructure in that area.
Yeah, and I know you weren't here in 2022, and I appreciate that you're aware that, you know, we're, the issue is safety, and seven-foot is considered the standard. Anyway, I voted against this in 2022, so I'm gonna stick with that.
Okay, well, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Ehrman and a second by Commissioner Fleischer. All in favor? Opposed?
Opposed, no.
All right, the motion carries, four to one with Commissioner Moss dissenting. Thank you, Sean. With that, we'll move on to public notice items. Mr. DeBra, I think you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. There will be a public hearing for a budget amendment coming up on March 19th, 2004. This will be the third budget amendment in its schedule for a public hearing and advertised for nine o'clock at the next board meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, well, moving, moving right along to county administrator matters. 11A, Building A Parking Lot Use for Volunteers with Vero Beach Air Show.
This is Madam Chair, members of the board. The United States Navy Blue Angels are retiring to Vero Beach for the Vero Beach Air Show on May 4th and 5th at the Vero Beach Regional Airport. They've requested, as they've done in the past, to allow the airshow volunteers to park and ride from the county administration complex. Additionally, that Building A would be open to help them to get out of the inclement weather from 7:00 to 6:00 p.m., and that would, all the other doors would be locked, it's just the foyer area would be open and available for them with the restrooms. So with that, staff recommends authorizing the use of the Indian River County Administrative Complex parking lots and Building A by the Vero Beach Air Show. Volunteers to park and have access to shelter and restrooms during May 2024 Vero Beach Air Show.
All right, I think this is something we do every time there's an air show, so unless there's any questions or concerns, I'll be happy to take a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer with a second by Commissioner Ehrman. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Looking forward to the air show this year. All right, the next item, county administrator matters, Indian River County School District, use of commission chamber.
Yes, Madam Chair, members, members of the board, I would, this was an item that was brought forward, if you recall, during the discussion last, last meeting under Commissioner Matters, and I mentioned that we had, I had verbally communicated to the board, to the superintendent that could use our chambers in light of the fact that the election day activity is occurring at the school, at the district headquarters, and so this is the formal, you know, request or codifying it in terms of being consistent with the policy. They have indicated they'll cover costs. They have indicated they'll cover costs as well as provide an AV person to work with our AV person in advance. So staff is recommending that you grant the approval to the school district of the Indian River County for the use of the chambers for the purpose of a superintendent's workshop and awards ceremony, a school district's board meeting, and a subsequent business meeting. Approval will you, uh, include the use of the board chambers during the hours of noon to nine P. M. And the use will be no charge to the district, other than that there's, we have staff costs, and they will include the staff to assist in the operation of the equipment.
Fantastic, and I think this is consistent with what we did for the city of Vero Beach when they were not able to use their chambers. So, um, if there's any questions?
No, Madam Chair, I I think that it's most appropriate. Uh, county administrator, I believe you made a a, an early and, but a good call as this is a governmental entity and it belongs in this governmental chambers. And uh, uh, with the scheduling conflicts, I get that mo- that's also the Presidential Preference Day. Uh, that that will be aligned with it, uh, so that their facility is being used for elections. I, I, I think this is well and good, and let's say, motion to approve.
All right, fantastic. Uh, we have a motion by Commissioner Flesher with a second by Commissioner Lore. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we'll move on to Parks, Recreation and Conservation. Consideration for a temporary beach access permit for dune restoration work at Tracking Station Beach Park. Who is taking?
Yeah, I'm sure staff will be coming in, but just to start this off.
Coming in from the green room now, maybe.
Yeah, there's a little delay, I think. So, uh, you know, the board had previously approved a policy for emergency beach access, which required an agreement that would allow private residents to be granted use of county beach parks for dune restoration projects. In February, March of twenty-three, eleven agreements were executed and projects were completed. Uh, staff does currently have a request for emergency beach access agreement for the use of Tracking Station Beach Park for the renourishment of nine-six-five Pebble Lane. Uh, the request would close Tracking Station Beach Parks for approximately one week to be completed. And as noted in the agenda item, there are some unique circumstances with regard to this request. Uh, one, the county's three, Sector Three Dune Prost has currently using several parks as permitted and approved construction access points. Uh, the closure of Tracking Station Beach Park for the request one week overlaps with other planned beach park closures, and especially during a time when we have increased usage of our beach, beaches by seasonal residents in addition to our spring break visitors. Uh, currently, Wabaso is closed for dune restoration. Uh, Golden Sands is expected to be open unless there are delays on the feb- on February twenty-eighth. And the private residence construction is ongoing at thirty Indigo Lane in the immediate proximity of Tracking Station, Tracking Station Beach Park. So they requested one week of closure uh of Tracking Station for a private repair will add significant additional heavy construction traffic or and ending equipment, dump trucks in a very congested area, uh, CVS and Seven-Eleven, very tight quarters. And as of now, Tracking Station Beach Park has only one temporary access for guests to access the beach due to the dune closures, the crossovers, and were, that were damaged during Hurricane Irma and Nicole in twenty twenty-two. If damage has incurred because of the construction, it could cause a prolonged closure of Tracking Stee- Tracking Station Beach Park. And then we have Beth and Mike here, but the staff recommendation is to, you know, to seek the, uh, the board to to consider the request and provide direction to staff. Beth, do you want to add anything?
Uh, I would just add that we've received a second request as well, which would be utilizing another beach access for about ten days. That is a slightly different situation, but the main issue here is the recurring request to utilize public beach parks at the expense of closing them, even if they're not being utilized for our own dune restoration or renourishment projects, uh, which, uh, staff does not have a process by which to consider those requests and either approve or deny them at this time.
I have a question. What would be their option if they were denied this request?
They uh could certainly look at um ways to transport the material through their private property. They could possibly.
By wheelbarrow?
So that's, that's one of the issues when the DEP emergency permits are issued. They're not considering necessarily how the material is to be placed within the dune system. So a permit is issued, and then they're looking for ways to um complete the work without having ingress and ingress to the work site, which is complicated. And last year, and this, this is from storm from November twenty twenty-two, so, um, these storms have since, uh, the county, uh, renourishment work or restoration work is either underway or has already been completed for previous storms. And we currently have Wabaso Beach and Seagrape are closed. Another issue that comes into play, which last year was less of an issue, was that the homeowners utilized the county's same contractor and piggybacked off of our existing closures, and the emergency nature of that work was imminent to those homes. We're outside of that imminent danger, you know, if you look at it that way. And so, um, the dune restoration uh would not piggyback on a county uh project or closure. And also, uh, the contractors have not yet been identified, to my knowledge, as to who would actually complete the work, which sets off a whole series of issues for staff in terms of obtaining a certificate of insurance, uh, contractor licensing, having our risk management review that. And all of that's occurring now after March first, when sea turtle nesting season is already underway. So they have to have additional staff to go out and monitor the beach and then avoid impacts to sea turtle nests. So the timing is really, uh, and not ideal, especially with spring break. I've already received emails from, uh, people who have reservations at Disney's Vero Beach Resort, asking whether or not the beach will be open or closed, even for our own project. So we're trying to navigate our own beach closures, get those beaches open as quickly as possible, minimize the impact to the public to the best of our ability. And we're also simultaneously trying to process private citizen requests.
Is there any cost to these types of permits? Do we charge?
There's currently no cost and no mitigation contribution for the impact of closure, no.
When do they want to do this?
Immediately.
Immediately, but they don't have a contractor?
Correct, and I have not yet seen the permit, so, from DEP.
So.
Yeah, we did, I know Eric, we did, Eric, I may, you might be able to answer that. We did eleven of these. This is the first time that I know of that we have that we have done, that we have had to close a beach for people to put on, do their private renourishment work.
We did close it.
Is that true?
No, we did close it last year for at least one homeowner, one of the beaches, but it was in the exact timeframe, uh, when the county's restoration was being completed.
And there's no way, this is out of the area where we're currently finishing up, right?
That's correct.
So there's no tie-in, they can't tie in with what's currently being done?
For the second request that we just received, um, that request would or could potentially use Wabaso Beach, but again, we have a contractor issue. The contractors take site control, our contractor takes site control. Any damages that are experienced would be the responsibility of the contractor to repair before the beach can be opened, because the contractor's not been identified. And it's also a two-mile hike to the location, uh, moving the equipment up back, back and forth every single day, um, if they were to use Wabaso Beach.
We, Eric, we haven't done these, we haven't had to, we had, Beth said we had to do it maybe on one before, but I don't remember recently when we issued these permits at the end of last year that we had to close beaches down.
And as Beth had mentioned, there were emergency permits issued last year that did dovetail on the county's project. Um, we were doing emergency measures in in some of these beach parks. And, um, you know, the the contractors, the contractor was the same contractor, and they kind of, you know, dovetailed into it. So when we had shut down Seagrape Trail for for emergency measures, um, the contractor, um, did, uh, you know, place sand at other developments up up the coastline using the Seagrape Trail, did, you know, alter my schedule a little bit. But again, the beach park was gonna be closed because the county was doing its its emergency measures. Um, but again, there were emergency measures that were performed outside of the beach parks.
Okay, and again, you said they want to do this right now, so we can get it in before the April first?
Well, Mar- March first is the start of sea turtle nesting season. So any work that is done at this point here is not done under a county-issued emergency permit. Um, under Hurricanes Ian, the governor's executive order for Hurricane Ian, um, which was extended, I still had the ability to issue emergency permits for similar activities. Uh, my permits did end on February twenty-ninth, though, in advance of sea turtle nesting season. Um, no one had placed sand, uh, this current season, under any emergency permits that the county had issued. Last year, um, right after the the impacts from Hurricanes Ian and Nicole, there were sand placements that did take place under the county-issued permits. But, um, right now, when I did speak with the contractor, uh, for the the property that would like to use the Tracking Station, um, they did not have a a contractor, as Beth had mentioned. And they are aware that a permit issued from me would have expired on February twenty-ninth. So they are reaching out, I believe, to the DEP. The DEP, um, through conversations I've had with them, do extend certain permits early into the sea turtle nesting season. So the DEP would have the ability to issue permits basically through March fifteenth with caveats on there from Fish and Wildlife for sea turtle protection measures. We are in the early part of the sea turtle nesting season, but nonetheless, it is the sea turtle nesting season, and, um, sea turtles are expected along the coast. I mean, we have not had one yet, um, but again, if we do have them, um, it it does trigger a lot of stuff. The county, just to kind of get, come full circle, the county is allowed to do, um, you know, sand placement, nourishment events for a a longer period of time, which is why my project is still continuing out of Wabaso and Seagrape at this point. But there is extensive sea turtle monitoring and protectionary measures that take place, and all that's written into the joint coastal permits, which are a heck of a lot more intense than these these coastal construction control line permits that are gonna be issued from the DEP, which allows them through March fifteenth, basically.
So this is something we've done before?
Dovetailing on the county's projects, yes.
Do you all see a big problem, because I'm not getting a good feeling about this?
I mean, from from the coastal standpoint, or or, you know, I mean.
About closing a beach for 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 somebody's private use? To for their private use to enhance their property?
As as Beth had mentioned, there are potential other pathways that contractors can look at for placing sand on private property, meaning, uh, there are conveyor belt systems. The volume of sand we were talking for, you know, specific property is about eight hundred cubic yards of sand. It's it's a significant amount, uh, figuring each, you know, dump truck can probably hold about twenty, twenty-two cubic yards of sand, or, I'm sorry, about eighteen cubic yards of sand. So it's a fairly significant amount of dump trucks, but between skid steers and conveyor belt approaches, there are other approaches that could be looked at, um, to place sand. Whether those options are available now with a a deadline of, say, March fifteenth under a DEP permit, to be quite honest, I I could not tell you. But there are other approaches that could be looked at.
Messers, I'm on the fence on this, I'm gonna hear what y'all have to say about it. You know, and and I am as well, uh, and thank you for your, uh, questions. And I don't know whether this was discussed at the beach shores, uh, as may have or should have. But in the end, we we want to close our public beach, our, one of our strongest elements of tourism and recreation, uh, the bigger tractor, because it needs to be some private work done. I I have a little challenge with that as well. I would prefer that they seek other options. What what's what my thoughts was, they want to do it immediately, but they have no contract. So I, is is this being put together, uh, quickly?
Commissioner, we, we drafted.
Plan?
Yeah, we drafted this agenda item, uh, February twentieth, so I had all of the information at that time. And prior to that, uh, the contractor or consultant working for the private homeowner had been working very closely with, uh, our recreation manager, Joe Tilton. And, uh, I can tell you for staff, um, we don't mind doing work, and we don't mind doing a lot of work. But this is a lot of work, uh, in part because, um, things are very fluid, and there's generally a hurry-up and wait kind of process that occurs. And I do think with, um, some guidance from the board as to how you would like to handle these, this particular situation and those in the future, we could come back and develop a framework by which consideration could be given and a process would be outlined. Uh, because right now, it's a little bit of a whack-a-mole situation, especially after a storm event. And of course, la- uh, the last storm season, when we experienced, uh, severe erosion, uh, it did make sense to do that, to allow, uh, private homeowners to piggyback, extend closures in the middle of the winter. But these are a different set of circumstances seasonally, and also for the sea turtle nesting season. Uh, there are a lot of unknowns here, and typically, uh, I I would say that that it would be ideal to, uh, for all the ducks to be in a row before, uh, requesting permission and use of a county beach park, if that's the direction of the board. I do believe that there should be some mitigation contribution in order to cover the cost that each, you know, citizen of Indian River County that they lose access to the beach during that time, um, or at least something to be considered, where that the money could go back into beautification of the park or park amenities, like beach access, uh, wheelchairs, et cetera. And to my knowledge, uh, there's a little bit of a, um, a situation where certain permits can be issued or can't be issued. And so it's, it kind of, um, one relies on the other, which is not a perfect process, because we're asking for something that maybe DEP is requesting as well. If they're requesting proof of access and we're requesting proof of the permit, but you can't obtain one or the other without the other, you know, because they're mutually dependent, that causes, um, a difficult process for staff. And we don't intend to deny anybody the ability to protect their home. On the other hand, we have a lot of other considerations, uh, that, at this point in the year, are, you know, um, potentially take precedent over the request.
Madam, Madam Chair, in light of all the issues and the deadlines and the sea turtles and the unknown about the contractor, uh, I motion to deny this request.
Is the applicant here?
The applicant was given notice of the item going to the board today.
There you go. Okay, i- i- is, is the applicant here? Okay.
All right, commissioners, there is a motion by Commissioner Lore to deny the request with a second by Commissioner Flesher. I have a question before we do that. Beyond this particular application, you also want to have a conversation about how to handle these moving forward after we take the vote? Okay.
Commissioner, and if I could, because we have a second request of very similar nature for a separate property, um, would it be easier just to name the property for that? It would be helpful to have direction from the board. That came in after we had drafted and after the board, um, agenda had been issued. But it would be helpful to have direction on that, as, otherwise, we may be here on the nineteenth as well.
Well, let's handle this one. I believe Commissioner Lore's perspective is they they don't have really any information. They don't have a timeline, don't have a contractor, we're in the middle of turtle season, and there's too many variables that we don't know to be able to issue a permit. Any other comments or questions on, this is specific to Pebble Lane, the Pebble Lane Project at Tracking Station? All right, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, so the permit will be denied. What's the second one that you want to discuss?
Uh, the second property request is, uh, called the Graff Property, and it is to install, help me with the term.
Dune cores.
Dune cores, which would require hauling, I think, again, eight hundred, um, cubic yards of sand. That one's, uh, also a little more complicated, because the permit for that particular project requires perpetual maintenance. So, um, if this is the only, uh, if one of our beach access points is the only way to, uh, complete the work, one could assume that it's also the only location that would be used for perpetual maintenance, which, of course, because we don't have a a process right now, and we don't understand what that system would require in terms of longevity and maintenance, uh, it requires a lot of equipment to set those cores in the dune. Again, a very similar situation, to my knowledge, that, uh, permit. Again, very similar situation, to my knowledge, the permit has not been issued, and contractor has not been identified.
A permit hasn't even been issued from DEP?
That one, the DEP has issued a dune core permit, and for that project, there is a contractor that has been reaching out to try to determine when they can do an installation. Again, this is a DEP permit, not through the county or anything, but as Beth had mentioned, though, it does require ongoing maintenance. Basically, with the dune cores, it's a protectionary measure that some people are exploring. I believe this is going to be the first one permitted through the county under this approach. But it does require that three feet of sand cover the dune cores at all times. As we know, we're in a high-energy environment, sand comes and goes. So, there does stand to reason that, as Beth was mentioning, they would be required multiple maintenance events for the homeowner to maintain the permit-required coverage over the dune cores.
What beach access point are they looking for?
Golden Sands, Golden Sands was the original request, and they did offer to utilize Wabaso Beach. However, it's a different contractor than the one we're using.
Correct, correct. And in the past, this property had performed emergency measures out of the Treasure Shores Park. So where it's located is pretty much, you know, equidistant from, you know, Treasure Shores or Golden Sands.
So, this doesn't really relate to this, but, I mean, it does. But, when we have, how do you deal with the liability of any impacts to any of our parks if you have two separate contractors performing work? I mean, in the past, if they piggybacked with our contractor, the one contractor is responsible. But now, you're going to get into a finger-pointing situation of, I didn't mess that up, they did.
More than likely, the contractor that's completing the work would not allow another contractor to come onto his work site, because again, they obtain site control. Even any damages, the responsibility of the contractor. And we're talking about cracked pavement, cracked sidewalks, any dune damage, any damage to facilities or buildings on site. And, so what would essentially happen is, our contractor would have to release site control, and then this contractor would come in. Again, the timing's very questionable, because I think we're looking at late March before Wabaso Beach would be open. And so, even if we waited till the project was over, we're going to be well into sea turtle nesting season at that point. So, the, well, and Wabaso was a two-mile hike for this particular project. The other option would be to close Golden Sands, which was just restored, and close it to the public, which would mean that we would have three public beach accesses out of eight closed. And they were looking for 10 days, I believe, for Golden Sands.
Eric, do we have these, some of these two properties?
Yes.
We do? That's a good thing.
But again, you know, looking back at Pebble Lane, that nourishment event is scheduled for, you know, tentatively scheduled for the 2025, 2026 timeframe. The current Sector 3 project that we're doing did add nourishment to the property that is looking to install a dune core. So, and we've already come down the coast from there. So we have already placed sand. They are looking to remove the sand, install the dune cores, replace the sand, and then replace the dune vegetation on top of it, so.
Was this brought forward due to the timeframe? Because I would, you know, I wouldn't mind running this by the beach shores folks. We get one of these again.
The dune core one is, it's an extremely lengthy process for permitting. So, I, you know, I'd have to go back to figure out when the permit process started. But that one there does involve an engineering firm, design plans submitted to Tallahassee. Tallahassee does reviews on it, and then they issue the permit. So, again, that's, that process probably started quite some time ago. As Beth mentioned, though, for the Pebble Lane one, that process did start in mid to late February, when they actually approached the county to see if we could issue an emergency permit, when I told them that my permit deadlines would lapse on the 29th of February. You know, at that point there, if he needed something beyond the 29th of February, you know, please reach out to the DEP and see what they would allow, because my permits will not go into sea turtle nesting season.
Well, I'm not questioning the permit, I'm just questioning, you know, the, how we get it there to close it, to live on a public beach during the peak of the season. Ian is close to turtle nesting, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, we've already voted on it. Yeah, I think we need some more clarification on this in the future somehow.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Did I hear you say that they want to remove the sand that we just put on there and the vegetation we just planted?
Yes, that would be, and then they restore it. You know, once they put the dune cores in there, then they would restore the sand back to what the county had just placed. But they did receive nourishment and protectionary measures with our current Sector 3 project.
And they were aware of the project that was going on beforehand?
Yes. But again, the permitting process for their dune cores is a quite lengthy process. So I'm not sure when they actually started that, but it is a very lengthy process.
So, who coordinates with DEP on these things? Like, if there's something like this that's going to DEP, I mean, is anybody communicating with us that these are going on? Because it seems like we're kind of getting it at the last minute, and there could have been ongoing conversations to try to align their permitting with our permitting and our projects, and does that happen?
If I can answer that, I mean, unincorporated Indian River County, we do, we are requested to issue a letter of no objection. You know, so when a permit application comes through, or is going to the DEP, the DEP does reach out and say, "County, can you review this process? Make sure it doesn't contravene any of your rules and regulations," and then issue a letter of no objection. That, at that point, for these dune cores, is the county's only input on it.
Right, I guess my question is, outside of the normal DEP permitting process, is anybody having just conversations about, hey, this is, this is what's going on, or we're expecting this, before you have to get into the official notice of non-whatever you just said?
Right.
Is anybody reaching out to see, or are we reaching out to them to express our concerns with the process and the conflict that it's creating? Because that seems like a conversation that should be happening at some point.
To the best of my knowledge, no. I mean, these property owners who typically, for an engineered dune core system, these property owners would reach out to an engineering firm to draft up the design plans and so forth. And then we'll find out about it typically when they, you know, submit to the DEP.
It just sounds like a good opportunity for some intergovernmental conversations that could probably help fix problems before they get to this point of confusion. But beyond that, for this particular, this isn't on the agenda, so we can't really do a...
Has an application been made?
So, we don't have an application process within the Parks Division in terms of requesting, that's part of our issue, is we get a request via phone call about being able to utilize a beach park for something that's tied to either a permit, emergency permit, or to the DEP permit. And I think that's, that's part of the issue is, I'm not sure, and Eric, you can answer this, when DEP is reviewing whether they're issuing a permit, looking at the ingress and egress that's required may not necessarily be considered. Is that a fair statement?
I would agree with that.
Okay, so they're looking at, can the, can the work, can they issue the permit? And they're not looking at whether the project in itself is, you know, has access for the work to be completed.
Mike, did you have something?
I guess my question is, you know, what is the point of entry for these people, is for the property owners to come to us and say, hey, we would like to use this access point. Unfortunately, you're going to have to close the beach park for a period of days. Is there any sort of application other than a phone call or email to do this?
Aside from the previous request to piggyback on county contracts, to my knowledge, this has not happened before.
Where would that application come from, Bill?
I don't know.
You certainly don't want your Parks Director being the subject matter expert on beach nourishment. It's a very complicated endeavor. We just want to know whether to open or close the park and cooperate with the project. I thank the Commissioners for their insightful questions today. My recommendation would be to consider a policy that requires dovetailing or piggybacking on an existing project with the same contractor with a reasonable period of notice, so that we can do this right.
Right, that's kind of where I was going with the conversation about this in general. But my concern was, we were going to take a vote on an applicant, on a project that we don't really have notice and that applicant hasn't been told. Beyond that, for a process like this, there needs to be some kind of payment if they're going to use access for our beach park. I'm not against providing the opportunity for somebody to try to re-nourish their beach. It creates a better beach system in general, and, you know, we want to try to be helpful for people that are trying to protect their property. However, you can't just come in with no information and ask to close things without all the details that we need to even make an accurate determination. And I think we're going to get into a lot of problems if we start allowing private things to happen during sea turtle nesting season. Because there's other, there's just other monitoring things that have to happen. And if you don't have a contractor that understands that, or a property owner that understands that, we're the ones in the end that are going to get dinged for that by DEP and Fish and Wildlife and all those. I mean, they don't take messing with sea turtles lightly. So, my suggestion is to put anything that you're getting on hold until you have a process and an application process. And whether that needs to go through parks, or it needs to go through natural resources, I don't know what's easier there, but you can't just, we want to close your park, we don't have a contractor, and we don't know when it's going to start and how long it's going to go. Can you go ask the Commission? Well, I can't reasonably make a, I don't want to be onerous, but I can't make a decision without information either. And they shouldn't expect us to be able to.
Madam Chair, my concern would be one of due process. If you've got a landowner that's going to invest in engineering, permitting, et cetera, et cetera, and they come to us and we say yay or nay, or there's no process to go through, I'd want to make sure that we have some sort of application process that they can go through and be either approved or denied based on a set of facts. That would be my only concern.
I think that's staff's issue as well. If we were to look through 205 of the county code, there's no provision that, other than a special event permit, that I have to issue such a permit, which is part of the reason I'm standing here today, is because if you look at that, there's no mechanism for me to even entertain the request or to create an application at this point in time without some idea of what that process would look like from your direction, I think.
Eric, how many times have we done this in the past for private landowners?
There were numerous emergency permits issued last year, under the Hurricanes Ian and Nicole. Several of them did act upon, a lot of them did dovetail into the county's projects. So, you know, at that point, it was the same contractor placing sand. So, some of the condo associations would place the sand out of, say, Seagrape Trail, as my contractor was, you know, mobilized into Seagrape Trail. That did take place. There was a private use of Treasure Shores Beach Park, in which it did close down the park. You know, so there had, that does, has happened. We also do require that if it is an activity such as that, then the person accessing the park does, you know, mitigate the actual damage to the dune and so forth. So, it does require, you know, actually, at this point, coastal staff works closely with parks on the use of that. So, when the contractor's done, we would make sure that the park is brought back to the conditions that would be, you know, acceptable for activities, you know, east of the coastal construction control line. So, again, these are, when permits are issued from the county, the DEP also does have the ability to issue permits. Typically, we do, you know, try to reach out to the department, but we also track their Oculus system, and are notified when permits are issued. And then we do a little bit of research to figure out what that permit entails. Could be something as simple as a dune crossover repair, you know, in which some of the parks are looked at for access for contractors to bring equipment on the beach for those. I do just want to, you know, extend a little bit of caution with regards to, you know, having the need for a contractor to potentially have to, for a property owner to potentially have to dovetail off of the county's contractor and project. Right now, my beach nourishment projects are construction projects in which I, it's an earth-moving project, basically. Sand is brought into the site, sand is sloped into a permitted template, and we move down the beach. As we're seeing, you know, people explore different potential protective measures for them to employ, I'm not sure the same contractor could actually be involved in dune core installation. You know, right now, like, say, they're earth-moving people. I don't know whether they'd have the expertise necessary. That's the only reason I want to kind of toss that out there.
So, let me just make a suggestion. Obviously, there seems to be a bazillion questions about how this is even going to work and all the different things involved in it. My suggestion would be that anybody that's calling right now for these things, tell them they need, you know, we're just going to put that on hold until we can create a policy, and then we'll bring it back utilizing that policy. But if this is something that's been going on since '22, and then blah, 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 it's not a life safety, my house is going to fall into the ocean, and we're all going to die kind of emergency scenario. That would be something different. But I don't see how we can vet these with all these variables today or anytime soon to give them definitive answers. I agree, we need to have some process in place. But, talking about dovetailing, and then that brings up, you know, I'm sure purchasing and the bid requirements, and then people are going to get all freaked out about that. We're going to make a wrong decision there, and blah, 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 blah. Due process, I mean, I just don't see how we can make, I would just tell them that we're not going to be able to make a decision until we come up with a process. And then bring us back a process. And if you want input on the process, my input is that it needs to be an application fee, there needs to be some kind of mitigation. There needs to be some definitive answers about the date and the timeframe. It needs to happen before turtle nesting season. And, you know, I know, like, Sandridge, sometimes people use Sandridge for golf tournaments, and it's not open to the public, because they're taking up the whole thing. So from a Parks perspective, if there's some kind of verbiage in there about the fact that you're utilizing it solely for yourself, and blah, 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 you can utilize that for the Parks aspect of it. But, I mean, we're going to go down a rabbit hole here without answers and keep talking in circles. So, that would be my suggestion. And if, and if it takes a little bit longer, it takes a little bit longer, because the reality is, neither one of these projects is going to find a contractor and get it done before March 15th, because we're at March 5th today.
Madam Chair, I'd like to add one last thing on this, maybe we can close this conversation up. To me, this falls upon the applicant and the contractor to look for access. Some of these that we've done over the last year, that gives you permits, they've done it through private access, whether it's the side of their house or something else. I mean, they were able to do it. I think it falls upon the contractor and the applicant to find other access. But to ask us to close a county beach for your personal gain, unless your house has fallen in the water, is just, is just not the, I can't accept that. Because when we do beach re-nourishment during the season, and we close Golden Sands down, people know that's what it's for. That's, no, they know your tax dollars are at work, the county is redoing the whole beach. It's a different scenario. I don't want to be on the end of that phone call, somebody wanting to go to the beach and said, "You closed the beach for private use?" You know, I could say, "Yes, because her house has fallen in the ocean." That would be okay. So to me, I think this process falls upon the contractor and applicant to come up with a way to find access. If they don't, then approach the county and give us a good reason through the application. That's where I think this lies, it falls upon the people that want to do it themselves. Just like if you're going to build a house, you get a building permit. Same scenario. That's all I got to say.
All right, anybody else? Gentlemen? All right. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Zito. All right, with that, we'll move on to utility services. County Road 612 slash 8th Street, utilities relocation at 74th Avenue Bridge. Notice of intent number six, sewer line delay.
Good morning, Commissioners, Sean Leeskey, with my other hat as Utilities Director. You know, this agenda item is associated with a Florida Department of Transportation project to basically relocate and expand a bridge at 8th Street and 74th Avenue. This project started, for us, even back in 2019, when we originally had an approval to do the engineering necessary. As part of that project, we have to relocate a forest main, a sewer forest main that was actually buried... actually buried below the canal. And as part of that, we, we, in 2019, we approached the commission, before my time, to get approval for design to relocate that forest main. In 2021, we actually finally got those, that design work and started kind of working into, to permitting it, permitting at that time. You know, the project kind of has been on again, off again, I guess, a little bit over the time, but around 2022, we were asked to provide a utility work schedule on what it would take to relocate that line. And as part of that, we suggested that we would have our line relocated and moved 40 days prior to them commencing work on the bridge. And what happened is, is I don't know, there's probably some breakdown in communication. I don't know that we ever actually received notice of when they were going to start that relocation. During that same timeframe, we were working with DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, and as well as the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers on what we call 404 permit. So, that gives us authority to actually be working in the waterway or jurisdictional waterway. And there was some back and forth between DEP and the Corps of who would take responsibility for that. And we were having some difficult time actually getting approval for that 404 permit at that same time. And so, we never really got notice of when they were going to start the project. And then around June of that, of 2020, actually, it was April of 2023, we finally got notice that, hey, we're going to start this project here within the next, so, within the next couple of weeks. You guys aren't out of the way. Doesn't look like you're out of the way. You haven't moved your water line, you haven't relocated your water line, you know, so you're, you're running the risk of liquidated damages. At that point, we did, you know, really initiate a pretty hard concerted effort to, to get the project moving. We had gotten some bids from Core Main and CK Contractors for the project of approximately $1.9 million to do that relocation. The relocation started as quickly as we can. We got as, you know, the, we got the company out there doing the work. Unfortunately, we did delay the project, so we delayed them starting the, the bridge work as a result of us not having relocated that line. So, what's, what's happened is, is we, we came across liquidated damages for that delay. And so, the contract that we had with them, that we had signed with FDOT, would have liquidated damages we did not get out of the way prior to them starting the, the work. That did occur. When we initially got completed with the project, we received notification from the contractor of a, of a liquidated damages in the amount of around $320,000. We embarked in some negotiations and some conversations with them. We felt when we were looking at what they had put together as far as the, the issues they had identified as part of the, the liquidated damages, we kind of had thought it was going to be closer to around $200,000. We also were working with the Florida Department of Transportation. And in those conversations, they felt that they could support around a $235,000 and change liquidated damages of payment, and we felt we could settle on that. One thing to point out is while the original cost estimates were 1.9 from CK and Core Main, the project came in at about 1.3, almost $1.4 million. So, we did have some cost savings associated with the project. We kind of re-engineered and redid some things to, to kind of reduce the cost a little bit. That's not to say that we, we shouldn't have been out of the way to begin with, but we were able to save some costs, costs on the construction side that should help offset some of the, the liquidated damages. But what we're asking for today is approval to move forward with payment. We received a letter from the Florida Department of Transportation recently on February 20th asking for payment within 30 days. So, we have basically by the end of this month that we have to receive, we have to submit that payment. So, we are asking for approval to remit the, the payment of liquidated damages in the amount of, what is that amount? 235, 325, 81.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
Chairman, when this, this, this bridge, I raised going over, over this bridge and this, bringing the same bridge all my life until now, and I knew it wouldn't be an easy project to do. And I guess there was some miscommunication between, between parties on this. The bridge is done, it, it looks good. There are some other issues maybe with the rest of the road that we're going to address. I talked to the administrator about yesterday, but overall, it's in good shape. And I think it's actually part of doing a restoration that was pretty tough, so I'll make a most, make a staff recommendation.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Ehrman with a second by Commissioner Lor. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. All right, the next item is county attorney matters. Beachfront litigation update. Ms. Prado, are you taking this? Welcome, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Susan Prado, Deputy County Attorney for the County Attorney's Office. This morning, I bring forward a update on the '22 beachfront customary use litigation case that was started back here in Chambers in October of 2018. After a long and lengthy process, there has been a final order issued in this case. At this point in time, due to the final order issued in this case and how it was rendered and issued, the county attorney's office is seeking guidance from the board as to how they wish to proceed. I will tell you that as far as from the county attorney's office and from speaking with our outside counsel on this matter, we are not recommending that an appeal be taken at this point in time, as it would not be advantageous to the county in this current case. So, we asked to seek guidance from the board. If you have any additional questions or information, I am happy to speak. There is a copy of the summary from our outside counsel attached here too, with the, just summarizing what kind of occurred, as well as a copy of the final order that Judge Kroom issued on February 12th, 2024.
Madam Chair, I think we all met with Ms. Prado and outside counsel recently. I think it was described to us very precise, which sometimes doing business, we have to make these decisions. So, with that, I would move that we allow counsel to settle this case and move forward.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Lor with a second by Commissioner Fleischer. Any further discussion?
What was the motion again?
The motion was to allow counsel to settle the case.
And did you want me to explain settlement of the case bill?
Please.
Thank you. Settling of the case would be just not filing the appeal and paying for just the costs that are awarded in the order to the particular respondent in this case, which I think were roughly $35,000, around there, give or take.
Okay. Everybody all right with that? All right, so there is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is manufacturers and retail opioid class action settlement payouts. Mr. DeBrol.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, when the whole opioid crisis started, there were lawsuits aplenty flying around all over the place. What happened was that the judge in Ohio that had the majority of these cases turned it into a class action lawsuit, and they started settling with the different entities as far as the retailers, distributors, and manufacturers of the opioids. The Attorney General's Office jumped up and offered their assistance to cities, counties, hospital districts, and others affected by the opioid crisis, and offered to act as a broker, if you would, in negotiating the various deals that would be available to the public entities. The first settlement that they entered into was with the retail and distributors. These are the CVS, Walmart, Walgreens type folks. This was aimed, this settlement, this pot of money payout, as, if you will, was earmarked for local governments, cities and counties affected by the opioid crisis. We went ahead and submitted information from our sheriff, from Drug Court, from all kinds of, of hospital district, EMTs, all sorts of different information that was used in order to fashion this settlement. And if you take a look at the ledger that I gave you, this is Exhibit A entitled "The Retail Settlement." You see that we have received a chunk of that money last year. We received another chunk of that money this year for the $3,000, $300,000-plus allotment that we allotted last meeting to the Drug Court for inpatient treatment and wraparound services. That comes from the retail settlement. It pays out over a period of 18 years. And so, if you see in 2039, we will receive our final payment from the retail folks in that pot of money aimed toward local government. Madam Chair.
And it's coming direct, this pot comes directly to us, not through somebody else?
Correct.
Okay.
That is absolutely correct.
Okay.
This comes directly to us on an annual basis, and the board has elected to give this funding to the alternative court program, the Drug Court, if you would, to provide for the inpatient treatment, outpatient treatment, transportation to and from meetings, doctors' appointments, et cetera, et cetera, housing, if you will. Those are all the wraparound services. Later on, the settlement was made with the manufacturers, Purdue Pharma, if you would. This is the second pot of money that we are dealing with, again, over an 18-year period. Again, it will last to, through 2039. We will receive that annual allotment. Because we are a small county, under $300,000, this will be distributed from the state to the southeast Florida Behavioral Health Network, and we will, we have agreed to allot this money to the various local agencies that are combating the opioid crisis in the various methods, whether it be treatment at the jail, supplies for our paramedics, and, and EMTs, different studies that would be done, et cetera, et cetera. So, as you see on Exhibit B, this is the manufacturer settlement. This was struck after the retail settlement. It is a separate pot of money. Again, this is the one that we had our Public Safety Council make recommendation to us to pay out the allotted sums. So, as far as clarification, you asked for something that you could put your hands on. I hope I have complied with that request as far as this exhibit that you have. I've given a copy of it to the clerk, and you can see how the payouts are going to be structured over the next 17 years.
Bill, just one question on Exhibit A, the
Yes, sir.
3% reduction. Where do those, where does that 3% dollars go?
A, a, as far as the 3%?
Yes, sir, right below the yellow line.
I, I, I got it. 3%? I, I, I'm sorry, I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Maybe it's administrative.
The Drug Court doesn't charge anything for an administrative fee, to my knowledge. I think it's whatever money goes in, goes out in the same amount. I don't think they keep a fee. I can check on that for you and let you know.
Right. And just know also the problem-solving courts. We've mentioned Drug Court, but also know that if there's a veteran with an opioid problem that applies as well.
And, and it, it all goes in, and all the problem-solving courts, not just drug courts, participate in that Exhibit A retail settlement.
Got you.
Thank you, this is much easier to understand than, than before. So, I appreciate that. And it gives us a kind of a forecast of what to expect year over year as it starts to decline.
Yes, it will.
So, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Kristen shares it's a discount applied by finance for the purposes of the financials. So, in other words, it's a safety net estimate, that 3% reduction.
All right, so.
Kristen from home.
Is there?
There's no action.
Questions on this? This was more the requested information.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So, if there's no questions on the different pots, and I guess I do have a question. Now, can they be used for the same things? Or is there parameters for each pot as to what it can be used for?
The only parameter is that it must be used to combat, I guess, if you would, opioid-related problems as far as whether it be, what is it, the, the drug that revives you if you have an overdose, that's allowed. Anything associated with opioid use disorder.
But that's the same for both pots?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we have since learned that this can roll over. So, any money that, that is allotted to, under Exhibit A or Exhibit B, the manufacturer's settlement or the retail settlement, if it is allotted to us, it will be able to roll over to the following fiscal year. If an agency that is allotted funds under the manufacturer's settlement that the board paid out at the last, or in, 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 in January, I should say, if they don't use all those funds, or if we don't use all those funds for Exhibit A, the retail settlement, it can roll over to the next fiscal year without clawback.
Awesome, okay. So, like, for TDC, if you give a grant and they don't spend it on the reimbursement basis, it just rolls over into the fund balance?
Correct.
Awesome, okay.
One question for Exhibit B. Annually, are we going to look at these five, it looks like five or five entities that we disperse these dollars to, or are these five set in stone?
They are, they are not set in stone. The process that we decided on was to have them come through the Public Safety Council, make their presentations there. Public Safety Council as an advisory committee goes ahead and makes their recommendation to the board. Those things can change as, you know, the, the, as, as treatment options might differ or be better that we would target our, our, our funds toward one direction or another. Nothing is set in stone. We'd be able to be very fluid year to year in our allotments and payouts to the various agencies.
Right, because treatment may change in five years, 10 years, 15 years.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Awesome. I think that answers my questions. I have a better understanding, so I appreciate that very much. Anybody?
Madam Chair, today's issue is the, the $99,000 balance.
Right, that's the next.
I thought it was the same one.
I, I separated the two. One, the first was the informational item. If there are no other questions or any comments from the public, we can go on to the $99,000.
Does anybody have any questions on just opioid settlement in general?
Hi, Cynthia Ryan, Executive Director of the Veterans Council. My, my job is to advocate and, and speak for veterans in Indian River County. Over 10% of the population is veterans. And so, I did reach out to everybody here via email with just our concerns, and I would like to just address that today, understanding that there probably won't be an answer, but I wouldn't be doing my due diligence if I did not. We're, we're asking that the county commission consider veterans in, in a greater detail for the remaining and upcoming opioid settlement money. Many veterans suffer from complex issues encompassing service-related mental and physical health concerns, pain management, substance dependency, as well as ongoing hurdles. health concerns, pain management, substance dependency, as well as ongoing hurdles tied to housing, employment, food insecurity, and interpersonal connections. This combination significantly amplifies the susceptibility to drug use and overdose. Statistics regarding opioid misuse among veterans is alarming. Studies have shown that combat wounded veterans are particularly vulnerable to opioid misuse, with rates of opioid overdose deaths increasing by 53% from 2010 to 2019. While advancements in battlefield medicine and protective gear have increased survival rates compared to past conflicts, they have also led to the rise of chronic pain among those who have served. One significant contributing factor to veterans' opioid use was the pharmaceuticals industry's targeting of them as a population, as a consumer base for opioid treatment. Coupled with the return of the service members from active duty, this resulted in the widespread promotion of opioids as an effect, as effective in managing pain and improving quality of life. Consequently, many veterans initiated opioid use as a result of service-related injuries, leading to long-term dependency and heightened overdose risk. Moreover, veterans experience high rates of mental health disorders such as depression, anxiety, PTSD, and suicide. The 2019 National Survey on Drug Use and Health found 1.3 million veterans, approximately 6.2% had substance use disorder. Opioid use often serves as a coping mechanism for emotional pain and trauma exasperated by the risk of addiction and overdose. Additionally, social isolation further compounds the issues, as veterans facing mental health challenges and chronic pain often withdraw from society, increasing their vulnerability for opioid misuse and suicide. Due to these challenges, we must provide accessible, nonjudgmental, holistic solutions to address opioid addiction and prevention among veterans. The Veterans Council provide, has, I have provided you all with a proposal and the programs that we, that we provide to veterans. From case management to emergency financial assistance and veteran advocacy and outreach, these programs aim to address the diverse needs of our veteran population and connect them with vital resources and support. By fostering these, these partnerships, we ensure that veterans in all circumstances receive the assistance they need and address underlying issues contributed to opioid use and prevention. I'm asking you to consider beyond what you have and really focus on veterans as well as prevention. A lot of what the, the money has already been funded to is really a reactive stance as opposed to a proactive stance. We do work very closely with Veterans Court as well as the Sheriff's Department, and we, you know, have now access to veterans that are in jail and helping them make a plan for when they do come out. But I, I just wanted to state, you know, in front of you that we are, we are here, we're, we're serving veterans, and they are one of our most at-risk populations for opioid misuse.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, are there any more questions on the information, money, allocations, processes, any of that, at this point, before we get into the 99? Because that's separate. Okay, go ahead. All right.
I just, I just wanted to confirm, I'm looking at the Indian River County Mental, excuse me, 19th Judicial Circuit Drug Court. That encompasses also the Veterans Court?
It would, it would encompass anybody that, that qualifies for the Alternative Court Program.
So we, we just call it by different names then? But it, it encompasses that? Because there is a...
Yes, correct.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure.
Very good.
Thank you.
Did you have something on that? All right, so if we're good on that, and I again appreciate the information bill very much, we will move on to the additional allotment of opioid class action lawsuit settlement payout from manufacturer settlement. And this is an action item, and this is the 99, I believe.
So Madam, Madam Chair, a couple of questions. One is, the Public Safety Council, who all attends that? And is it open to everyone? I understand that, you know, there could be other entities that want to receive some dollars that weren't in the first batch, if you will. So we're, this Board is dependent upon the Council recommendations to disperse these dollars, and I'm just wondering who all's in these Public Safety Council meetings? And I think Commissioner...
It would, well, any answer to a question here, Commissioner, Sheriff? The Public Safety Council is comprised of an appointed committee. However, attendees are also there, and we heard presentations at the Public Safety Council of members and non-members of a, a want for a need or addressing the opioid settlement. And we, we did hear all the presentations, and it was open to any and all who are participants in, in the community who address the concerns related to the opioid settlement.
Okay, so had the Veterans Council been at your last meeting, would they be, would it have been considered for the balance of what's proposed, the $60,000 going to our friends?
And they could have, they could have come to the meeting and, and requested as well, and applied again. This was not a, a closed application. Once the settlement was established and discussed that we would need presentations, the, it went out, and I don't know if we could not do it door to door.
Gotcha.
I, I get what you're saying. You know, were they invited to the, come to the table?
So...
The answer would be probably not.
Right. And, and I'm impressed with, with substance awareness because they, they seem to be very proactive.
Yes.
And have already indicated that, you know, they could even expedite their, their dashboard project and others. So that's refreshing, but, you know, as Mr. DeBra said, we can, we can roll over the dollars as well. So, I mean, that's something this Board probably should think about.
Well, my two cents on it, I think that doing the needs assessment is really, I mean, that's kind of something we've been talking about since this conversation came up, is having some type of assessment of where we actually need to be putting our money that's, that's kind of driving those decision processes and setting that process up. I have no problem with the rolling over of what's being recommended by the Public Safety But I thoroughly appreciate and would support the funding for the needs assessment and expediting that, because that's going to give us that data that we, that you were talking about, about treatment and that kind of thing. And I agree with you wholeheartedly that we need a defined process that people know how to interact with, that has some clear steps of what you need to do or what you needed to provide, similar to, to TDC or CSAC or any number of kind of grant committees that, that review that. So I would definitely agree with that, and I would agree that we probably, maybe after the needs assessment is done, need to reevaluate where and how and what those decisions are looking like, because there might be the need, and I know if, if you look at what other states and counties are doing around the country, to create a committee specific to this and these allocations with, I mean, I, I think the Public Safety Committee has stepped up and done a great job very quickly with very little information, but I'm not sure if everybody on there, is, if it's reflective of the entire community that needs to be part of that discussion, if that makes sense? Not to downplay what they've done.
Funds were, the funds were made available through the settlement. We were tasked with looking at expending those funds in the most appropriate fashion with presentations. It was well discussed that we would need a, an assessment, a monitor, performance factor, because the funds are going to diminish. They have to be carefully appropriated, and we have to look at the impact, the very intention of the settlement. So we will need that tool to ensure that we're doing the right thing in the future.
And Commissioner, and Commissioner Fleischer, I agree, and I, I think that the Public Safety Commission did a very good job, again, very quickly with the limited information and parameters and the ever-changing, let's face it, ever-changing information they were given.
Correct.
And to... What is available, it's not available, it's going to be delayed.
We can't roll it over, we can roll it over.
Four months late.
Very hard to make decisions with changing information. But to Commissioner Laura's point, I think in my understanding of what will come out of the needs, or the needs assessment process, is they're going to bring in a lot of these different community agencies like Veterans Council and, and other things to really try to get at where's the need and where are the holes and where, where are the safety nets that we need to put in place that we can with these, with these dollars? And I'm sure there's other groups in the community too that would love to be part of that discussion, so I, I agree that we probably need to look at that. But the needs assessment, from what, how it's been described to me as being anticipated to move forward, and, and maybe you guys want to talk about that, is to create community conversations and bring everybody in to really look at it more holistically and from an umbrella perspective. So we're trying to capture all that information from those groups and then put a proj, a process together.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just to kind of recap, or give you a little bit of background, the Public Safety Council meets quarterly. They met a week ago, last Friday. There was a presentation made as far as for the Substance Awareness Council to go ahead and expedite their needs assessment study, to provide the dashboard. The Council recommended an additional $60,000 be allotted to expedite that study and to create the dashboard, and that they would go ahead and roll over the remaining $30,000, $39,000 and change to the next fiscal year. And to Ms. Ryan's point, the process that was undertaken by the, by the Council was that each of the various entities that were asking for a share of the payout made a presentation to the Council, and the Council then acted on that. You are certainly welcome to make a presentation based on whatever program or information you'd like to share with the Council and participate from here on out for the next 17 years. You are a welcomed person, welcomed entity at the table, and I turn it back over to the Chair.
Thank you. Did you guys want to describe kind of, or...
Yes, so my name's Carrie Lester, I'm the Executive Director at the Substance Awareness Center, and I appreciate Ms. Ryan's remarks, and I, I think the needs assessment, I keep pushing the importance of expediting it and having this live dashboard, because I think it's what the missing piece really is. We didn't have that back when the Public Safety Council was doing its best to allocate these funds, and we really need it to have a coordinated, organized, intentional effort moving forward. It really, being able to do this will help us look at and monitor in real time, make data-driven decisions, and, you know, hopefully for the next 17 years that these funds come into our community, but ongoing. We can put a system in place that really elevates what we do when we look at our substance use problems in our community, the way we address those issues in our community, and our larger behavioral health continuum of care. And so I, I see this as a real opportunity for us to change our system and the way we do things in our community, and to help bring lots into the fold. As an organization, we already do a lot of this work in prevention. We follow the strategic prevention framework. We, we do very well at trying to coordinate and have an action plan and goals on prevention, and we can fold this together and, and bring the community together on it and, and make sure that the Public Safety Council has good, informed data to look at, pull down and make those decisions. As you can see, there's various pots of funds, and those are just for the opioid settlement dollars. But there's lots of different pots of funds that our community can also be looking at, and once we have a good organized system in place, I think there'll be a lot more that we can do for our continuum of care. And so that's why that's very important to me as I lead our organization in substance abuse prevention and recovery.
Awesome, thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Madam Chair, move approval?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And just to my fellow Commissioners, because we're probably going to have a conversation about this in the future, there, and at least, yeah, for the next 18 years, there is a, there is a toolkit on the National Association of Counties website that kind of gives some different examples of what other areas are doing as far as how their process is, and some best practices, and that might be something if y'all are interested to check out. So when it does come back, we kind of have some ideas of what others are doing. Not that we can't do our own thing, as we always do in Indian River County, but see what others are doing. Okay, well, that brings me to my matters, which is the ongoing county recruitment attorney, county attorney recruitment process. So today you guys wanted to talk primarily about a salary range. So in anticipation of that, Mr. DeBra was very helpful in providing me with a salary study that had been done by the Florida Association of County Attorneys. I have a copy of that for everybody, at least the part related to county attorneys, which is kind of tiny, but if you put on your glasses and magnifying lenses, you will possibly be able to see it. Oh, I don't have any backup in there. I'm giving it to you now.
Yeah.
To highlight for this discussion, Indian River County, right now, I do, yep, I can share another one. Indian River County, our attorney is paid $202,000. We have three attorneys, two paralegals, and one administrative assistant. If you look at comparable counties, I tried to kind, I'm just going to highlight some comparable counties by amount of staff, and then some counties that are surrounding us. So Citrus County has three attorneys and one support staff, they're at 173. Clay County has three attorneys, one paralegal, and one assistant, they're at 223. Flagler has one deputy, one assistant, and one legal assistant, and they're at 275. Nassau has three attorneys and four support, support staff at 196. Osceola has four attorneys and four support staff at 218. Bay just has five employees, I'm not sure how they're broken down, but that's, they're at 179. Brevard has eight attorneys and five staff members, and they're at 265. Escambia has one deputy attorney, county attorney, two senior county attorneys, two assistant county attorneys, and then six other office staff, and they're at 203. So that kind of gives you, and then of course, everybody else that answered that is listed on there. So that kind of gives you, the range for comparables, you know, could be anywhere from 179 to 275. We're sitting at 202. So whatever you guys want to discuss as a range, there is that. I'm open to, to whatever you guys want to do with that. I also told you guys that we would be discussing a possible use of a recruiter. So we had, hopefully everybody went ahead and read the projection, or the proposal from Strategic Government Resources, which is 2,700, or 27,100 and 115. from Strategic Government Resources, which is $27,150 is their proposal for the whole There is another option with the County-City Attorney Selection Assistant Service through the Florida Association of County Attorneys. That does require more input and engagement on our part, and they help more with suggesting where to place everything, putting some job description, you know, paperwork together. But where they really come in is in the vetting process and the review process. Their cost, so they're not actually a recruiter. They're more of helping you through that process. Their cost is much less at $5,000 flat fee. And then those are our options for recruiters. My concern is we can continue to do this, and I have no problem bringing this information back constantly, but when we get to the vetting process, I really want to make sure everybody's given the same information, and our ability to vet is like on an even field, because I would hate to get into a meeting and, you know, we've kind of, who's doing those background checks and that vetting and making sure all the same information is given to us. So that is the information that I have to bring back.
Madam Chair, do we know how many openings statewide there are for county attorneys? Is there a way to find that out?
Yep. I was on the Florida Association of Counties website this morning, updating that, looking at their governmental openings. There was not a specific opening for a county attorney. There were several deputy or assistant attorney positions with a handful of cities primarily and one county, I believe. So there is not a lot of openings being advertised in that venue, in that venue, anyway.
In that venue, okay.
I did not look in other venues like Indeed or anything like that. Commissioner Moss.
I just wanted to confirm, and I'll confirm this with the county administrator, that to retain the services of a recruiter would be approximately $27,000, then?
For SGR for this one, it's $27,150.
Because I, and I've stated this before, but I believe very strongly that we need to take this to the outside. I don't want to leave it to chance. It's one of two key positions, you know, for the community. The county administrator, all departments report to him, and for the county attorney, all legal matters will report to that person. And those are the two key positions within the county. Those two positions report to us, and we report to you. So that's the chain of command. Since this is such a key position, I feel very strongly we need to go to the outside. I don't want to leave it to chance.
Commissioner Ehrman, do you have any comments on the salary range or the use of a recruiter?
I do.
Okay.
Good information. Thank you for supplying it. I would say follow pretty much what we do with the county administrator with most of the requirements, but I would say the salary range could be like anywhere from 190 to 220, based on experience, but not higher than the county administrator's salary. Must live in the county within six months, because we don't want to go through the same issues with getting a permit, do we, sir?
Boy, so do we.
But...
Getting the permit wasn't a problem.
And, of course, the evaluation will be up to the Board of County Commissioners raises as county employees get raises. At least, I would say, 10 years' experience as a lawyer, three to five, at least three to five with government experience.
Yeah, we went over that, we went over that stuff yet last time.
I'm just, I just wrote it in as I thought of them. And then, you know, obviously, they prefer they be a Florida resident and no Florida law. If they're local attorneys, if they're from Indian River County, this area, I would think they would be given preference a little bit. That's really all I have. But as of, my thought is this, we, yes, I'm in favor of using a recruiter, without a doubt. If somebody local wants to apply, or somebody that we advertise it through various outlets, FAC or whatever, whoever applies, and if they're local, they should probably, they should get preference if they have the experience, but it's still all done through the recruiter. So it's all divvied into one sink, one pot, and then they vet those people and send it back to us, kind of like the process we did with the county administrator. I'd liked our county administrator process until the day, until the final day that we sat here.
That we got, we got.
But the information we got beforehand, the information we had beforehand was great information. The way it was done was good. We were able to look at it and vet them appropriately, and then we brought it down to the last five. I think that was all good. So that is kind of my thoughts on this, that, yes, I'm for using a recruiter, and everybody ends up going to the recruiter for their applications. If it's somebody local here that you know, hey, apply to the recruiter.
Okay. I appreciate that. That's where you're at. All right, Commissioner Fleischer?
No, I do agree. It's a small cost for a very significant position. Initially, I felt that there was ample amount of individuals that would love to be working in Alphine County. And after looking at the amount of postings, and I guess it's not as available or abundant a field as we would want it. So a recruiter, most certainly. I appreciate Commissioner Ehrman giving a replay on the information as far as where we want to go, how we want to go. Salary is important. I concur with what you've outlined as well, because I believe it's most appropriate. We are also currently doing a salary study, and we don't want to cross that line as well. So I believe that if we go forward with a selector at 27,000, it's not a huge investment for the yield.
Okay. I appreciate that. Commissioner Lore?
Reluctantly, I'll go along with the recruiter. I think we have other sources we can use, but I'll go along with that. I think with respect to the salary range, and I think Commissioner Ehrman said something about not being above the county administrator's pay, I think that's all negotiable. We can have a range of whatever we want, but when we negotiate his or her contract, that's when the salary's set.
Okay. I appreciate that. So real quick, one thing that I will say is, it sounds like everybody, and we would obviously need a motion for this, is in favor of the SGR proposal. The good thing is, is we've already done a lot of the homework by getting all this stuff together and having multiple conversations on it. So if we were to engage with them and bring a contract back, we should be able to move that forward pretty quickly. And to y'all's point about local people and in-house people, I know that they are working on some of the openings right now, and we've had several in-house applicants for those positions that have made it through. So I think that they look for that. So you have a motion to approve the SGR contract or to ask them to bring a contract back?
Yes, I'd like to move to approve the contract.
Or the proposal. Right now, we have a proposal. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Susan?
Just really quick, thank you for bringing everything back. Thank you once again for bringing this up for discussion so early. Just want to point out that, thank you for looking for the different salaries in between the counties, but I just want to make sure that when we're looking at the other counties, that we're looking also at cost of living. As we know, our county is precious, and it's beautiful and it's wonderful, but a lot of, it is a higher cost of living county than, for example, our neighboring counties. So when we're looking at that, we're looking at cost of living. And also, and I understand, and with all due respect to Mr. Takanich and his position as a county administrator, also, I don't believe that the county administrators or, you know, the managerial positions in local government have to take on a, normally, they don't have to take on a $100,000-plus debt for a education that's required to sit in this position. So just want to take those two into consideration when you're looking at that, because if you're looking at hiring someone, you know, that they be able to afford to live here, because if it's going to be a requirement to live here, that they be able to afford to live here and still be able to pay that debt off, because that is essentially a second mortgage, if any of y'all know what I'm talking about. So just thoughts for whoever may come in or whatever may come in. That's all for informational purposes.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Who would the point of contact for the consultant be?
The chair.
Very good.
Yes.
I'm not in favor of the having to be a resident of Indian River County. You may have someone in North Fort Pierce or South Brevard that is a star that doesn't want to move here.
And I think that what will happen is that, once they're engaged, they'll come in and talk to each one of us about what we want and don't want, and then put something together to put out there. I don't think that, I don't know what our current contract says as far as residency for attorneys, but that is definitely something that could be negotiated.
As long as it's not in the application that goes on.
Right, right. Okay. All right. So there is a motion by Commissioner Moss and a second by Commissioner Ehrman to approve the proposal from SGR. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then the other thing I'm just going to put in, put a little bug in y'all's ear, is when you look at that salary study, look at how many attorneys are in the attorney's office. We are on the lower side of that. All right, so back to our agenda. Thank you, guys, for that. I appreciate it. And we'll get that going. Commissioner Fleischer, request from the TDC Council.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate the opportunity to present this and hopefully, if you're consideration and approval. During the February 21st, 2024 Tourist Development Council meeting, we were approached by the Play Treasure Coast Sports Tourism for additional funding from the contingency in the tune of about $20,000 for a very exciting opportunity that was unplanned, that came about, and we have the opportunity to harness. As you're aware, the tourism dollars that are allocated are exactly that, from heads to beds and generated from tourism. And so we want to redirect that. They did make the request for $20,000. We did hear the presentation. The presentation was exciting, as exciting as you'll see it now. And we're looking at taking the opportunity to allocate $20,000 to Play Treasure Coast Sports to harness this with an understanding that the contingency fund has $128,000.81 available for distribution. That was the reason why that fund was created, and we're about halfway through the process. At this time, I'd like to call upon Mr. Rick Hatcher to present, and I believe we have a PowerPoint to show the coveted program.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, commissioners. Rick Hatcher, President for Play Treasure Coast Sports Tourism, as well as I do have Ryan Strickland, our Vice President of Business Development, and Kevin Green, our Director of Events and Stuff. But as we, as Commissioner mentioned, I made the request at the last TDC meeting, we had several events come to our attention that we could be, that could be hosted here in Indian River County. This was after our budget was set and approved, and then we learned about these events. And so the first event I'd like to share with you is the event of the AJGA. It's an event that we have been trying to work with the folks at AJGA for several years. They reached out to us and reached out to Bella at Sand Ridge. This is a tournament that's going to be here in June. You've got 150 of the top high school players around the country that will be here in the event, and they've actually moved this event up a day, because it will then be followed by the FSGA, the Florida State Golf Association, is going to be played out at Orient Island, and they'll have another 150 players. So you'll have a combination of this, but you'll have about 10 days of golf, junior golf, here in Indian River County. And you can see the projected economic impact and the heads and beds. As we like to say here in sports tourism world, that's really the driver of the events. The next event that come to our attention is the Cal Ripken Baseball Event that's going to take place July 18th through the 21st at Jackie Robinson Training Complex. We have been working with this group, trying to source venues and facilities on the Treasure Coast, working with this. We appreciate the work that Rochelle and Jeff Biddle at Jackie Robinson Training Complex and working with us, they were able to find an open date that worked with the Ripken Factory. And again, the Ripken Factory is a combination, joined together, of the Cal Ripken Baseball and the Baseball Factory, that the Baseball Factory has been in for, but this event. But it also leads in to two other events in November and January that will also be hosted here. So we're really looking at this event for the money for in July, because our next fiscal year will start October 1. And then the other event is very different to a lot of people, the Special Olympics. State swimming championships take place at North County Aquatic Center. We hosted this event back after a three-year hiatus this year. It's always occurs the first week in October. But after the event was over with, they alerted us that the event, due to travel dates, moved it up a week. When they moved it up a week, it then now falls into this fiscal year that we were not prepared for. And so that's why we had come back to, for the request of the $20,000 for these three major events, as well as bid fees that we are in discussions with, with the national championship from freshwater fishing that's going to take place in Felsmer. We worked and had conversations with Major League Fishing. They were in here approximately five years ago and did a commercial. And I think Commissioner Adams, you were part of the TDC when they were doing this. They have reached out to us and want to hold their national championships for their team series that's going to be here. Top anglers and across the country will be here. It's unique, because they draft their teams based on the distinction. It will be livestreamed, and then it will definitely be a destination marketing opportunity. We've already sat down with Ben Ehrman there with Discover Indian River, or Discover Visit Indian River, and alerted them, because we feel like it's not something that we would promote the Sports Commission about, but yet it's more of what we have here leisurely that we could benefit. And then the other opportunity I want to make sure everybody's aware of, and again, working with the folks at Jackie Robinson Training Complex, they have put us in contact with USA Softball. And just to remind everybody, Jackie Robinson Training Complex with the upgrades has now been elevated to a USA Softball Training Center. And so they are looking to bring in approximately 450 youth players in December over about five-day... in December over about a five-day period. These are twelve U, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen U. The importance of this, they will select their national teams from this event that's going to be here. These national teams are laying the groundwork for when the softball returns to the Olympics in twenty twenty eight in Los Angeles. It was in, in Japan in twenty-two or uh, twenty-one. Uh, it is not in Paris this year in twenty-four, baseball, north softball. It's coming back in twenty-eight. So this is starting their process of identifying players, and it's going to be done here in Vero Beach in Indian River County. So that's the, the purpose of the request. Uh, Commissioner Flesher, thank you for allowing me to come before the BOCC with this presentation, and I'll be glad to answer and address any questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions of, yes, Commissioner Moss?
What is the annual amount that you're allocated?
I'm sorry?
What is the annual amount that you're allocated currently?
I'm sorry.
What's your current budget?
Oh, my current budget, yeah. For the use of a event grant, it's a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
A hundred and fifty-five. So you're asking for an extra twenty over and above the hundred and fifty-five?
For the grants, yes.
Within the hundred and fifty-five is, are there funds that you could redirect to address?
Only if the events get canceled or rained out. Right now, every event, and we are looking at fifty-six events already on our calendar for that use of the hundred and fifty-five dollars, or it's a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, there could be some allocation, but again, we're looking at a bid fee that's going to have to be paid. A portion of that, this money will be paid for the bid fee for the, for the fishing as well. And that bid fee is excess of fifty thousand dollars.
Do you yourself, as an organization, do you have a reserve that you can draw from for this twenty thousand dollars?
No, we do not. And we actually do not hold the money ourselves. The money stay within each one of our county partners. We invoice and then they write the, the checks to the event owner, per se. We don't hold the dollars.
Yeah, I was just going to follow up on that. So Commissioner Moss, the Treasure Coast Sports Commission, the way their grant works is it's primarily for bids for sporting events or different events. In that world, they don't just come here because they love you. I mean, they do, but there's also a bid associated with it, um, to even have them consider coming here. So if you're, if they decide to come, there's kind of a fee that goes to that organization that puts it on. Um, the thought being that what the locality gets in, in economic benefit and heads on beds and that type of stuff offsets that. So they have a program in place for the prod, or for the events that they want to bid on. And then, and it's happened in years past, the one I remember most distinctly was the shooting event.
Yes.
The Masters that would come up mid-year as an opportunity because we have great resources that's outside of what would normally be in their um, calendar of events or program, per se. Um, I think that's what the fishing and some of these other baseball things are. And I will just, just on the fishing one alone, the last time they were here, it was amazing for the North County area, for the businesses and hotels in Sebastian, um, for the businesses in Felsmer. And I will say that that event and for Blue, I mean, they were out at Blue Cypress. They were, they went to five different um, fishing locations. They were here for five, you know, five days, five rounds. And each day they would go to a different um, fishing location. So uh, Lake Garcia, Blue Cypress, Keenonsville Lake, which I just want to point out, you can't even really get there unless you know where it is. And I think they did the final round there. And they don't tell you where you're going because they don't want these guys to go and fish it and find out where all the sweet spots are.
Yeah.
Um, but that event really put Headwaters Lake on the map. It already had a great reputation, but I can confirm for you that since that event, it's like a parade of bass fishing boats going to Headwaters Lake on a daily basis. Cause they come by my house at like six o'clock in the morning. And you can tell between the dump trucks going to the sand mine and the bass boats, uh, you know, we're going to have to start talking about Babcock Street expansion. But it really put, that event put it on, and you wouldn't really think of fishing as something that brings a lot. And those guys come, and I only know this because, you know, they'll stop at the restaurant or you see them at the gas station. They have, their boats cost more than my life does, but they stay for a week or two weeks at a time. And Commissioner Lore's always out there. He could probably give you more information on that than me. But I mean, that's their big time guys. So for that event, I definitely think that it's, it's a great opportunity to market what we have from an ecotourism perspective, that we don't often get the opportunity to market.
And to answer Commissioner Moss's question that I didn't mention, all of our grants are post-events, with the exception of two to three events we have to use bid fees. So we put the responsibility back on the tournament directors, event owners, to track their room nights, provide that feedback to us. And if those rooms are picked up in Indian River County, that's how we allocate our funds at that point. Only bid fees that are approved by our board only go out in front of those events.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
One other thing I wanted to clarify, these are not local citizen tax dollars.
Yeah.
These funds are generated from tourism. They earmark for tourism, and this is uh, reactive. If we go forward, these funds will, are not encumbered until they're necessary to be encumbered. So uh, once again, the, they'll be, if there is an allocation, uh, I don't, I don't think Mr. Hatcher's going to go out and start buying a bass boat or whatever. Uh, this is all for the good of the program. And the program, if it does not take place, so does the funding not take place. So it's very clear, and we're just returning back tourism dollars to tourism.
So you, you need to be able to have this approved so you have the option of putting in the bid, and in the event that we're awarded the bid, the money is clearly available. If we're not awarded the bid and the money, and the event doesn't come here, that money rolls back into contingency.
Yeah, a portion of it. Not all of it is associated with the angling, uh, angler event. Uh, based on the three events that we have that are occurring in our current fiscal year, what it does is then alleviates and opens up a pot that we can then look at the fishing event.
Okay.
Office managing budget must account for uh, what we have, what is, is taken in uh, each period, which is then presented to the public uh, in the form of our meeting uh, to ensure that the funds are, are properly accounted for. And uh, the timeliness is even more significant
Yeah.
as we're about ready to, to finalize the future budget. So with that, uh, Madam Chair.
Sir, let me, may I add?
Uh, please.
Pardon me, and thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so the fishing event is really unique and deserves special consideration. The, the other events are, um, I will, I want you to know, they are um, events that generate venue fees for our facilities. And all these events pay the venue fees to Sand Ridge and the pool and the park system. Um, all of the grants that are submitted uh, by the Sports Commission, or Play Treasure Coast, as we call it now, are vetted through the Budget Office after they go to the County Administrator's Office and to me for review and sign off. And then it's done on a reimbursement basis. Um, so it's, it's a really tight system and it's been working well for us. Um, I will add, the golf event, I will let you know that um, that bid fee, that is one of the few events that does require a bid fee, as Rick mentioned. A lot of, a lot of them do come here because they've been here before, they like it, and they, there's a process to be uh, apply for and receive a grant, and they like the venue. But the bigger events do have a bid fee. In that particular case of the American Junior Golf Association, uh, that is a fifty thousand dollar bid fee. So we are Sand Ridge staff, we are raising those funds through private donations. Um, but the Sports Commission is also a resource to supplement that effort. So we're looking forward to it. And the Jackie Robinson Business Model, um, also obviously charges for their events um, that are helped to be incentivized by this system. And quite frankly, their business model is what is allowing them to place all of those um, profits, if you will, back into the facility and are going above and beyond their legal obligation under our facility lease agreement to make substantial improvements out there.
Madam Chair, with that, uh, I want to make a, make motion that we move forward to allocate the funding that satisfied the request of Play Treasure Coast Sports uh, at this time.
All right, I have a second by Commissioner Ehrman, and you have a comment. Yeah.
Thank you. I can tell you all, you know, being on the board, advisory board for the Sports Commission, that this is money well spent. Feel good about it. You're going to get a big return on your investment. They also work very closely with the Chamber of Commerce here, so it's very, very good. I can tell you from personal experience, being out at Dodger Town, Jackie Robinson, and umpiring the games, I talk with some of the people that attend. For each kid that shows up to play, there's normally two parents or more that are, that are there. You know, the grandparents come, friends come to take a little vacay here in Florida, whether staying in a hotel or an Airbnb. Mike has a good point about the swimming, they pay the venue fees. So I mean, this is a, this is a huge return on investment. And Commissioner Flesher, thanks for, for bringing it forward. Um, we can't go wrong. So just to let you know, it's a positive.
All right. So there is a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, Commissioners, you guys have let me go on for like two and a half hours now. So we are going to take just a five-minute break before we wrap it up. Back to order. We're back, we're back for the, for the final inning of the Indian River County Commission meeting. All right, next item, Commissioner, Commissioner Moss.
Yes. Uh, thank you.
Take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, bringing this back, um, as you know, this was a to-be-continued item, and staff is revisiting the administrative policy on this. However, um, that has not been concluded. Therefore, we are still operating under the current uh, policy, which is case-by-case basis and does not preclude a non-governmental use. and does not preclude non-governmental use. We've just been discussing tourist tax, and I certainly appreciate the money that sporting events bring to the county, but cultural events also bring considerable tourist tax dollars to our county. So, and also in the interest of not, you know, pulling the rug out from under these folks since they have used the facility for the last two years, and that's the Vera Beach Film Festival, they've used it the last two years, there haven't been any problems. It's, it's been a benefit to us in terms of the tourist tax. We've already discussed it, so unless there are, there's new information, or anyone wants to make additional comments, I'll just move to approve it for this year and go from there.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make clarification. It was pointed out that this generates tourist tax dollars. At no time was there an assessment by the chamber or any other entity as to the tourist tax dollar. Tourist tax dollar is heads to beds. I say it again, it's heads to beds. It has nothing to do with what's generated. It may have been an anomaly during that week. There was an increase in tax dollars. It was estimated that there was a 17% increase, but that could have been when the truckers came out, out west of town. It could have been from anything that happened during that timeframe. There was no organized estimation or calculation or accounting of tourist tax dollar, and that was verified by the Chamber of Commerce as well. I, I had the opportunity to discuss that, and it, it's, you know, we could, we could state that, well, that, that was because of us, or that was because of this. But truth be known, and once again, the Treasure Coast Sports Commission, or Play Treasure Coast Sports, was brought up, they actually have a dashboard, and they are in contact with each and every hotel, and they take those numbers and present them. It's something they started in 2007, and it has been the point of discussion that all entities should be doing something of that nature, because they show you where the dollars are generated, and what the outcome is, and why the outcome is for the exact timeframe. And I just want to clarify that, that those numbers were not tourist tax numbers.
Well, that's fine, and at any rate, they're not, they're not requesting-
I don't want anybody misled that this was one of those events that was directly related to tourism in any way, shape, or form.
They're not requesting tourist tax dollars, and I have no doubt that there are people who come from outside our county and stay here to enjoy this. And I, I agree with you, it would be convenient if every single organization that received tourist tax dollars did have that kind of measurement system, but I believe that the Sports Commission is the only group, as I recall, unless it's changed since that time, they are the only group that actually has that kind of, or that level, shall we say, of, of measurement.
No, that's incorrect.
So, I don't, I don't think it's-
That's incorrect. They're not the only ones.
Within, within the groups currently-
They have a dashboard-
Yes.
That we, it's easily accessible.
Right.
But all of our community partners do an evaluation as to their impact, and that's how they appeal for the dollars.
Okay, well, without tying this into tourist tax, there haven't, there have been no problems the last few years. This request may not come before us next year, because if the policy changes, then we would not even receive the request. So, in the interest of meeting their current request, my motion stands. I move to approve the use of the facility by the film festival.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Ehrman.
Yes, Commissioner Fleischer, you are correct. I read the same thing around that, but we want to solve this. I think it's time to, that we move forward to this, have, you know, like you said, to have county staff direct a policy. And I, I think the policy should be that these chambers are used for government use only, whether it's just what we did with the school board, or the city of Vero Beach like we did, or the state. We have our legislative aides, you know, state or federal government, and wants to use it for something, or, or a commissioner needs to use it for information to the public, you know, of, of that thing. But, you know, I mean, I guess I want to say, these are, these are kind of hollow ground, and I think we should move in that direction, but I would think in the interest of doing it the last two years, maybe we could and should let the film folks use it, and this will be the last time. I'm okay with that, if you all want to do that, I'm okay either way, but I have no problem letting them use it one more time, and let, and let's leave it at that, and then after that, the policy sticks. It's government and government use only, and that's it.
Madam Chair, the existing policy doesn't include the chambers.
As opposed to, it was stated that it doesn't preclude the chambers. It does not include this particular facility. The intention was for the available facilities that we had, and as I stated at our last meeting, the availability of facilities has grown since the inception of that original policy. We did not have the IG Center, and that, or we did not have expanded fairground accommodations as well. Again, this is less than, this is about 1,000 people that are going to be dispersed throughout various sites and venues, including a church, including the theater, including, it does not include the City of Vera Beach chambers as well, but it does include a variety of venues. I, I think it's very exciting, but I don't think the excitement leads me to believe that it should be in this facility.
Okay, um, do we have a prospective policy? And what does it-
So, we don't have a policy completely revised yet. We're currently researching other counties and seeing what they're doing, and I've shared this with, with all of you, and I know it's a board decision, you know, when I look at the, just looking at other levels of government, you know, I don't see the US, the US Capitol being rented out, their, their house, their senate chambers, the Florida Capitol, their house, or senate chambers, and I do kind of do believe, I heard the comment, there's a certain level of sanctity with this chamber, and that it should be used for governmental uses. We are, will tell you, the proposed policy, we'll be looking at precluding the use but for governmental agencies, or org, agencies, or organizations associated with a government agency. That, that would be the future policy, that would be coming forward within the next, let's say, month. I don't think it'll take that long, but it'll be coming forward.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the public that wants to provide any input?
Two microphones.
All right. Seeing none, there is a motion by Commissioner Moss, which has not been seconded. Is there a second to her motion? If not, the motion dies for lack of a second. Is there a substitute motion? Or any other comment or questions?
I'm going to make a motion that the policy should begin after, after this event. We can allow them to use this event, since we've used it the last two years, and it's coming up in 30 days, that we allow them to use it this year, but after this event, and nothing in between this event, or from today, and in between this event can be held here, that we, that we allow this on the April 12th to the 14th, and after that, it's strictly government use, period.
I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ehrman with a second by Commissioner Moss. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion fails two to three. All right, do we need another, what does-
We won't try anything else.
Does anybody want to try anything else, or does that, that's good, Bill?
Yes.
All right.
Do we need to come up with a policy on this?
They're bringing a policy back.
We're working on it.
Need to give them direction, that we want this for government use, or you understand that?
You understand it, we have it.
Yeah. Okay, with that, we'll move on to Solid Waste Disposal District. Approval of the minutes of January 23rd. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move approval.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer with a second by Commissioner Lur, I heard. All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Next item is 23rd Amendment and Extension to Republic Services.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer. I'll be happy to, our Commissioner Ehrman will second that, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is final pay to Kimley Horn and Associates for Work Order Number 56, fiscal year 2022 Full Cost Accounting and Financial Assurance Reports.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer with a second by Commissioner Lur. All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. And our last item, which Hama Chu is actually going to talk on, request for a special call meeting for the solid waste and recyclables collection services. This will be a very exciting meeting, no doubt, and we should all bring our snacks.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Hama Chu Matha, Managing Director for the Solid Waste Disposal District. Want to sort of bring up the same presentation that, that I presented here last year about the request for proposal process related to the solid waste and recyclable collection service franchise. And I've updated a few slides, and wanted to give you kind of an update on where we are in the process, and then ultimately make a recommendation for a, for a special call meeting. I know the chambers are empty today, but I, from past experience, I can tell you that I, I'm hoping this to be a very dynamic process, an inclusive process as we move forward with, with, you know, the new franchise agreement in 2025. So hopefully, we'll have more, more input from the public, and the chamber will be a little more full than right now. With that, um, next slide. Okay. So, this is the timeline that I presented back to the commission back in July of 2023. It was just kind of laying out, you know, that we were starting the process of the RFP. We did provide a, a board update and got some direction from the board in July of '23. Our plan was to release it in October of '23, open it in January, and then we were going to make a recommendation for award contract by July of this year, and then contract starts in October 1 of 2025. And the goal with, with the timeline, and we started so early, is we wanted to provide a, a sort of a transparent process in what we're doing, make sure we have public input, we give the haulers enough time to, to give us information, provide proposals, get a competitive process going, and at the same time, once decisions, decisions are made, we wanted to make sure that there was ample time for, depending on what direction we go, if there were new trucks that needed to be done, new carts that needed to be purchased, that we provided ample time to, to whatever potential hauler for the, for the next franchise process. So I've highlighted the, the couple of things in, in white, and then I'll show you here in the next timeline. So this is an updated timeline, if you will. One of the things we did is in terms of going from, from left to right, is we did come back to the board with a, an additional RFP update back in October 2023. That was related to the scoring, if you recall. We had 65 points originally for their financial proposal, based on staff's recommendation and board's approval. We've reduced that from 65 to 45, and we wound up increasing 10 points each to qualifications and references. So that went from 15 to 25, and the technical proposal also went from 15 to 25. So that was kind of an interim update that we did in, in October, and that resulted in the RFP not getting released until the following month, in November of 2023. In the process of, once we issued the RFP back in November, we did have a non-mandatory meeting with potential haulers in December. Over the course of, of that time period, we issued 10 addendums, staff and purchasing and legal. We answered over 177 questions that, that were part of the process, and, and there were some great questions. I think there was some, I'm, I'm happy about the process, because it is a lot of questions and answers. It, it, we felt that the haulers were engaged, they wanted to understand what we were asking, we wanted to make sure they understood and, and were clear about what we were asking, so that, so that there is no confusion on what they're proposing on, and, and all the various options that we, we laid out for them. So, so I feel very good about the process, that, that we, we didn't rush it, we gave, we, we provided an extension. Originally, the, the proposals were supposed to be received in January. We gave it additional time. They actually opened up a couple of weeks ago, in, on February 21st. Going forward, one of the next things, and that's the purpose of this agenda item today, is to, I'm, I'm going to continue to kind of give you an overview of what, what was in this RFP, what, what are some of the things that you'll be, be looking at down the road and coming up on March 20th, is, is basically setting the stage that from here on out, what we're, we're looking at is a series of public meetings to, to basically, you know, we have a, a selection committee that, that has been established by the county administrator. I'll go into that a little bit next, but the selection committee is, is doing our process. One of the things in, in the RFP is the selection committee is only looking at the technical proposals, the, you know, the qualifications, references, and sort of a recycling growth participation elements of it, everything except financial. So, right now, we know who the companies are. There are five companies that responded. I'm happy to share their names, that is public information. So, so I'm happy that we didn't just get one, one response, we got five. So, so there is, there's ample competition and interest in working here in Indian River County. And so, we, we, as a selection committee, the five folks, we know who the vendors are, we don't know their pricing, okay? We are asked to just look at the, the other, everything except the, the financial. Purchasing and our consultants are reviewing the financial aspect of what they've submitted. When we meet, the selection committee meets, well, once we've sort of determined and evaluated the technical side of everything, then, then we will have information about pricing, that we will factor in. But, but in, in, in sense, the way the RFP was done is, I'll put it simply this way, that if, if a company, you know, five, out of the five companies, the lowest bidder was, say, $3 million, they would get the full 45 points. And say another proposal was $6 million. They're, they're, they're double the price, so they would get half the points. So, 22.5, something like that, is, is kind of what, what, what that sec, company B would get. And so, so the financial proposals, if you will, based on the pricing between each other, the point system is allocated based on what their price is compared to the lowest bidder. And so, us as a selection committee sort of won't be evaluating the points allocated in, in our total, you know, calculations. However, once we see the pricing, once we look at all the technical evaluations, we'll be able to kind of, as a team, be able to come through as to what staff and our selection committee is going to recommend to the board at some future board meeting. So again, what we're looking at, and I'll, I'll go into it in a little bit, but we're looking at a series of couple of meetings, where the first meeting we're looking at is a special call meeting on March 20th. We want to basically invite the public, present the county commission with all the information that, that we've gotten so far, and, and not make any decisions that day. I think that's, that's kind of the direction we're going in. As, as if you read the agenda item, one of the direction we were looking to go into was to also that day, we were potentially going to ask for some decisions about the options, but after talking to purchasing, talking to legal, talking to our consultant, we feel that we need to give public and the commission some, some time, time to digest all of this information. We've been close to it, we, we're working on this for over a year. We want to give the, the commission and the public sort of, basically, the information that we've received. Present that all to you and to the public, not ask for any decisions that day, and, and then we'll come back. and, and then we'll come back at, at a future meeting. We're looking at probably next month, April sometime, where we are gonna be asking for some decisions. We have four options, which I'll go into in a second, and we want to narrow that down to one option at that meeting in April. And, and then from there, again, I'll describe the process. We want to basically try to negotiate with the top two ranked firms and, and try to get the best pricing we can for, for the commission and for, for our residents. Overall, again, the timeline, we still feel, originally, we said that we would get this done by July. We think we can probably get this done by May or June of this year. And again, it's the will of the commission as to how fast or how slow you want to move on this. We're happy to support it, but we feel that we're gonna be able to give them fifteen to sixteen months upon award to have ample time to, you know, whoever is the, is the franchise awarded to, that they'll have ample time to get ready to service our residents. Again, I'll go through these slides really quick. Basically, this is, these are the same slides I had provided to you before. We want a competitive procurement process. We did it through a request for proposals. And what we're looking to do, as, as our purchasing manual does allow it, is, is do the RFP process, which we've initiated with also some sort of competitive negotiations. It is, is, it is a standard practice that, that's being done across the state of Florida for these type of franchise agreements. Again, overall, we want to maintain the quality of service, increase efficiency, increasing recycling rates, and, and manage costs for, for our residents. I think I've shared in the past that we, right now, and our residents in unincorporated Indian River County are, are probably experiencing some of the lowest rates around. But our contract is nine, ten years old. So when, when residents are paying about eleven dollars a month for subscription service, that, that's, that's kind of the lowest, if you will, find a, around the region and probably around the state for a subscription type of service. So, and again, I don't know what the new prices are. So I, I, I can't even tell you where we're going with that. But from what we've, from what we've heard from looking at other regions and other communities, that prices are most likely gonna be higher. But we want to manage those as, as best as we can through this process. Franchise, you know, area, solid waste area, that, as I mentioned, the current subscription service, once a week garbage, once a week yard waste, on-call bulk pickup. We have about over seventy percent participation right now in unincorporated Indian River County. And through this franchise RFP process, we were actually able to, you know, reach out to our municipal, municipal partners, and Indian River Shores is actually actively participating and has actively participated in this RFP process. So again, right there, City of Sebastian, they just entered into a new franchise in twenty-twenty-three. City of Vero Beach provides their own solid waste services, so they weren't interested in participating. The town of Indian River Shores is actively participating. City of Felsmere is currently using our piggyback contract, and they're kind of, you know, watching what happens here, and they may consider piggybacking in the future. Same thing with the town of Orchid. We work with them to sort of update this piggyback clause. This is a new piggyback clause compared to what we had in the past. It allows the, basically, our municipalities to reach out to our hauler because they're, they're in our recycling franchise area, that they can reach out to them and, and have a separate agreement for the services that they're looking for in, in, in their community. And so overall, the approach is economies of scale. The more customers that we can provide the hauler, the, the better level of service, the better rates that we can have for our, for all of our residents. Recycling franchise area, basically, it services all of Indian River County. So unincorporated and all the five municipalities would be serviced by our franchise hauler for recycling. Again, this is, these are slides I've kind of mentioned in the past. We have, continue to have issues with contamination on our recycling carts. And I, I welcome any, any commissioner or staff that wants to come out for audits with Sue and Jill. They, they go out numerous times a month to, to basically audit carts. They, they, you know, put out, we actually have a campaign where we, if, if somebody's recycling really well, and they look in the cart, they actually live, you know, give them, give them a really a good, you know, job well done, you know, on a tag, if you will. And then otherwise, we have these oops carts, like, okay, you, you know, you shouldn't put plastic bags in here, or you shouldn't put diapers in here, sort of, sort of thing. And then some are really like, no, this is contaminated, fully contaminated, and we reach out to the hauler to not even pick up that cart. So this is kind of an example of some of those carts that we basically refuse to pick up because people are using them for garbage service. One of the new things that we've added to this franchise process, we, we see this in Brevard, staff reached, went up to Brevard. They actually have carded yard waste service. So out of the four options that, that I'll, I'll mention, two of the options are actually looking at, if, if the board wanted to go in that direction of, of providing a third cart to our residents where they would have a carded yard waste service. And here it is in a nutshell, the overall four options that will be coming to you later down the road. Option one is basically our current subscription service. So this is what we currently have in unincorporated Indian River County. And, and again, the town of Indian River Shores is participating. So option one would be once a week, carded automated service in a ninety-six gallon cart. Yard, yard trash would be once a week. The customer provides their own, own, own bins. And then bulk trash, in this new franchise, would be once a week. It'd be a committed route, no more on-call service. There'll be a committed route for bulk service throughout our community. We do have a limit of four, four approved items, if you will, per week. And this also has been extended to multifamily. Currently, multifamilies do not have bulk pickup. So in this new franchise, for option one of subscription, we have added that feature that bulk service will also be available to multifamilies. Yes?
What are the approved items?
So, so we, we, we don't want car engines or anything like that. But the standard bulk items would be white goods, what we talk about, like refrigerators, stoves, those type of things, couches. And we, we have a whole list of items there, but we, we try to exclude anything that would be chargeable, like, like, you know, rolls and rolls of carpet or things like that. But, but anything that would typically be garbage but would not fit in their cart. So if it doesn't fit in their garbage cart, they, they can put out, put out those items. Right now, you know, the on-call service is about four days. So you can contact, you know, our current hauler, and they have four days to pick it up. But then, you know, person A has their couch out, and now they got a four-day wait. And then two days later, somebody else puts out the refrigerator, and they have another four-day wait. This new, you know, service that we're adding is basically, a bulk truck will be routed Monday through Friday throughout the community, and whoever's put out their materials on, on the day of their pickup, up to four items, they'll get picked up.
No, I, I think having it on a designated day is great. I was just curious what's, maybe when we talk about this.
Yeah, I'll, I'll provide some more details exactly on all the bulk items.
I don't know about everybody else, but I get that question sometimes. I'm like, I always say like a couch or some big item, but I don't want to, with my luck, I'll tell them the wrong, I'll tell them carpet one day, and the carpet's not in the list or something. And then I'm in trouble, so.
Right, right. And then recycling is what we have currently with sixty-four gallon recycling carts. So that, that's pretty much the option one, which would maintain the subscription level of service that we currently have, with some enhancements. I think that, that, you know, after ten years, we've learned as to what some of our residents want, what some of our multifamily communities need, and, and so that, that's kind of what we've gone to. We've had a lot of HOAs. They've actually, on their own, designated one day a month for bulk pickup because they don't want all of these things throughout their community throughout the month. Option two is, is exactly as option one. The, the difference being is we would put it on what we call universal service. So every resident in unincorporated Indian River County would have garbage service. It'd be, it'd be universal. Instead of, the benefit of that is, in terms for the hauler, if you will, they, they, they have a fixed customer base. All residents are, are provided a garbage cart. They have a weekly pickup. My feeling is that in terms of that recycling contamination now, which we have predominantly a lot of rental properties, by having a cart in front of every home, that, that hopefully that would reduce or eliminate that contamination. So, so that's, that's the difference. The universal service would be put on the annual assessment. We would work with the property appraiser. We would work with the state. We, we, we have a good window of time right now, once the decision is made, to put all those, you know, things in play that by the time when we look at three months in twenty-twenty-five, October, November, or December of twenty-twenty-five, we'll, we'll have the process with the state approved and with the property appraiser to, to, to ensure that, that, that that would, that would go seamlessly. Option three and four are just like option one and two, the only difference being with the yard trash. For the yard trash column, basically, the customers, if we go with three, it's subscription, they would get a third yard waste cart. Option four, it'd be universal. They would get a third yard waste cart. Any questions on the matrix? I know there's a lot of information there, but, but in essence, there are four options in front of you, but they're, they're very similar in terms of maintaining subscription service or universal service, and then either going with carded yard waste or not.
Any questions?
Okay.
You have a question? Just come up to this podium and state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
I'll give you later because it's too long. Margot Sadnikovich, seven-five-seven-five, First Street Southwest, Vero Beach. I have a quick question about, you mentioned that you need to confirm with the Florida State and the county appraiser. Why?
No, good, good question, good question. So when, when the, we have a non-ad valourment assessment right now, and there's a, basically a landfill fee there currently. If we want to add another line item to the, the tax bill, right? We would have a collection price for universal. If the board elected universal, we would add another row to the tax bill. So we want to work with the property appraiser to be able to add that, if the board elected universal. And then we also need to report to the state that we're gonna have a collection cost added to our tax bill. Because, because everything that we're doing on a local level does go to, to the Department of State.
So you're trying to copy the contract that Sebastian has with the Mel- Melbourne, that they do include their service in a real estate tax, so you're trying to get the same to Indian River County?
Yes.
I mean.
Unincorporated Indian River.
Vero Beach.
Yes.
That's very interesting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, we, we discussed this back in October, but again, just, just to refresh you, we, we have the evaluation criteria in front of you. Twenty-five, twenty-five for qualification references and technical proposal. Participation growth strategy is five, and then financial proposal is forty-five. The selection committee consists of Sean Liski, the Utilities Director, Kristen Daniels, Office and Management Budget Director. At least Chris would be an alternate in case Kristen is out. We have Heather Christmas. She's the Deputy Town Manager and the Town Treasurer for Indian River Shores. She's also on the selection committee, myself, and then Ron Jones, the Assistant Solid Waste Director. Want to remind the Commission, the cone of silence is still in effect. You know, we want this to make this an open and fair and transparent process. Both staff and this SWID board are, are in the cone of silence provision. It's been in effect since the RFP was, was released back in, in November, and it remains in effect until the SWID board makes an award. So haulers are not to contact staff, to contact the board, and if they, they have any questions or issues, they need to reach out to the purchasing department. Going back to the agenda item, one of the things that, that we had had in there, one of the recommendations we had in there, at the time that we wrote the agenda item, was to have a series of meetings, but on, on the special call meeting, the original sort of consensus was that, just like the selection committee is doing right now, we don't know what the prices are. We're evaluating the companies. We know the names of the companies, but we're just evaluating everything but their price. We will see their price at some point. What we were originally wanting to approach the board is on March twentieth, we wanted to also, you know, kind of, kind of do the same process for, for two, two reasons. We wanted the, sort of the board to focus on options and costs and not, not really the haulers. Again, we, we have a competitive process. We have, we have five companies that, that do this day in, day out throughout, throughout the, the U.S. So we, we didn't want any potential bias or, or issues with, with any of the proposers. And so we wanted to sort of leave the name, the names off when we presented that to you at future meetings so that you only saw the, the options and the prices and recommendations as to vendor one, two, three, four, or five. And we wanted to focus on the procurement process, minimize the impact of any lobbying, you know, against any specific firms in, in a public hearing process. We, again, we've discussed this more with, with staff, legal, purchasing, and our consultants. We, we, as I presented to you the timeline, I think the approach we're, we're looking at now is let's, let's give the public, let's give the commission ample time. We'll, we'll sort of bring you back on March twentieth at a public meeting. We'll give you more details about the RFP. We'll display all the options. We'll display all the pricing. We'll display all the, all the firms and not ask for any, any, any decisions at the time. Let you, let you and the public provide some feedback to the selection committee. We would have the opportunity to maybe ask any, ask some questions to, to the firms if we want to clarify anything. And then the approach is to maybe come back to you in, in, in April for another public meeting. At that time, we would invite the public. We would, you know, ask the board at that time to make, make a decision on one of the four options. And what the selection committee would do is recommend the top two firms at that time and, and allow us to go and negotiate with the top two firms on the option that the board selects in April, and then come back to you in May or June with a recommendation of a board. So we would present back that, hey, we've negotiated. We've seen from our consultants that there could be a drop in price as a result of those competitive negotiations. So whatever you see the initial pricing, from what we've seen across the state, that those prices can, can get lower. So we, we certainly want to recommend to you that you allow us the opportunity to negotiate and try to lower some prices compared to what we, what we initially get. So that's sort of the, the, the path. We, I do want to mention in this recommendation, I think it's in the agenda item, there was a irregularity with receipt of an electric, electronic file from one of the proposers. Basically, they sent, you know, there was a requirement to provide paper responses and also an electronic file. They, they did send it. We have proof. Purchasing has verified that, that the email was sent to the county, to the proper email. But our internal spam system rejected it, did not allow it to come through in a timely manner. Purchasing has reviewed everything and feels that, 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 that's basically our own firewall system prevented it from coming in. It wasn't the lack of the, the, you know, the proposer for submitting it. And so we've received emails from that, that vendor in the past that came through, okay? But maybe it was the file size or something that occurred. Our firewall stopped it from coming in. And so purchasing has evaluated that and said that we, we need to waive that irregularity and, and not consider it as a process for dismissal. So I do want to mention that as one of, one of the recommendations to the board. And then overall, we want to, basically, we're requesting that we hold a special call meeting on March twentieth at one P.M. in, in this chambers. It is a Wednesday, so we're, we're separating it from the regular county commission meeting. And one of the things that, that, you know, we've done is we have these postcards that are ready, if you will, to be sent out to over eighty-seven thousand residents in the county, single-family, multifamily residents, to basically sort of let them know that this process is happening. The, the table that you saw, that would be on the backside of this, that, that lays out the four options. Again, I know that's a lot. I hope we don't have eighty-seven thousand people show up. But, but we, we want to make this a transparent process because, you know, what, this is a, a potential ten-year contract, starting in twenty-twenty-five. And the decisions that we make, the franchise hauler that, that's selected by the board, will, will impact our community one way or the other. And we want to make sure that, that we, we inform, inform our community as to some of the decisions and changes that will be occurring in the chamber over the next couple of months. With that, I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
So for clarification purposes, you're asking us today to approve a special call meeting for the twentieth?
Yes.
And at that meeting, we're going to get the input from the RFPs?
Yes.
And we'll have the opportunity to ask clarifying questions of staff, of the applicants, and then hear from the public, and they will have the opportunity to kind of ask questions and give input.
Sure.
No decisions will be made. That's fully inform, more like a workshop than a meeting. We will be given about a month to digest all that stuff and then come back in April where we will be asked to make a decision on the top two.
First, on selecting one of the four options. And then we'll have, staff will have recommendation based on our technical evaluation, the financial evaluation as to who the top two firms are. So.
And then once we select the option. And then once we select the option, the top two, you will go back and renegotiate based on, can you do better?
On the pricing, best and final offer on the pricing. And there would be a separate negotiation team, and we've reached out to the county administrator on, that hasn't been decided yet, but there would be a smaller negotiation team that would be designated by the county administrator.
Okay. Okay. Now, if I saw on your postcard that it says that they can watch live if they're not able to attend, are you guys planning to put any kind of, not, well, or link somewhere where if people have comments and they're not able to make a midday meeting, they can still submit that, like, on the website or Facebook? I'm not suggesting Zoom necessarily, but.
We, we.
Or survey.
Our plan is to put this on the county website, on the government channel, in terms of the postcard that you see, so the information is out there. Certainly, with the direction from the board, approval of the county administrator, we can explore options of a comment. I just feel we could get overwhelmed.
I don't disagree with that.
With the amount of input we could get, so I don't know.
I just don't want, since the meeting's in the middle of the day?
Sure.
And people work, I don't want us to not allow people the opportunity to provide input outside of that meeting.
Sure.
So I don't know if it's just a simple survey, or if you have questions, submit them to, I don't know. I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not even saying we need to do it, but for transparency purposes.
Montu, possibly we can get with.
Over 80,000 postcards going out, you're probably going to have a great sample size want to communicate with us, whether it be, I probably wouldn't put a phone number on there because that would burn it up, but maybe some mechanism on the postcard where they can, I don't want to say vote, but make suggestions. Because it's ultimately up to the subject matter expert, meaning the team that Montu has, I don't want to say it's not up to the public, but it's up to the experts.
I don't disagree. I was just reflecting back on the Sebastian process, and I think at some point, well, it wasn't their city's survey or unofficial poll, but there was some way for people that couldn't be at the meeting to kind of provide input. We don't have to decide now, I'm just.
Okay.
What I would offer is what we could potentially do is you can get with, we can get with IT and come up with a special email address, like IRC SolidWaste@IndianRiver.com, add it to the postcard, and then that would be a dedicated email inbox versus it going to somebody else and not, and then them trying to figure out.
I think the postcard's already made.
Yeah, I think we've started the printing on the postcards, but we can put that on our website or something like that.
Maybe it's just something we can announce at the meeting on the 20th?
Okay.
And that if people are unable to make it, they can submit something, I don't know.
Put a link on our website when they come to our website.
Montu, did you, on the current, the current subscription that we have, what percent of our residents have that right now?
We're over 70% currently for a subscription service.
Montu, at the March 20 meeting, will the five proposers make a presentation?
It's a public meeting. We're not necessarily inviting them to present, there's nothing in our ordinance that requires them to present. If the board wants to hear from them.
I would suggest that staff make the presentation, and then if the board wants to ask questions to them, we can. Otherwise, I, you know, I question what their presentation would include that's beyond what they have present, you know.
I guess I'm just thinking that, you know, of the five, I would bet a couple of them would be happy to jump up to the podium, brag about their own proposal.
Sure, sure.
So I mean, I guess you would give that opportunity to all, to be fair.
Yep. They could be treated just like any other member of the public if they want to.
Very good.
Yep.
I had a thought, and it just left, so I don't. I don't know what it was, so I'll come back. Anybody else have any comments? I'm turning into Commissioner Law, I'm getting hungry, and I'm losing my train of thought.
So we want staff to make the, make the presentation?
Staff, just like a normal, I would view it as a normal workshop. Staff will start the presentation, we will have the opportunity to ask staff questions, we'll open it to the public. If the applicants want to get up and say something, I don't think they need to do PowerPoints and full-on presentations.
Right.
We can ask them questions, and then, you know, the rest of the public can come.
Right, we can ask them questions directly.
Yeah.
Yes, and it is deemed a workshop, so there is no voting.
Right.
And we will have a robust discussion, and the follow-up will be.
A month, correct.
One month later.
Oh, I know what my question is, I'm sorry. And I know, I'm hungry, too, believe me, my stomach's eating my backbone. What, this has nothing to do, for clarification for the public and everybody else, with closing convenience centers?
Great question, great question, no. Good disclaimer to make. I've said this to the commission in the past, and I'll say again, no, this franchise decision that the commission will make for our community has no impact on the convenience centers. That's a separate contract that currently is with Republic Services. We are engaging with our consultant on an RFP process for that contract, because that contract also expires September 30, 2025. So we will be coming to you for a separate approval or a separate process for the landfill, other services at the landfill, and the customer convenience centers. And in that RP, there is, there is nothing that we're putting out about impacting them or shutting them down. I think that you're, we have a separate budget for that, we're going to maintain a separate budget for that. I have said in the past that depending on whatever the board decides, that we should wait, you know, 12 months, 18 months, 24 months to collect data, and then we can bring that data back to you, and then some future decisions can be made. But at this time, we don't want to combine the two efforts at all. We're going to maintain the customer convenience centers, maintain our budget for the, for the operation of those convenience centers. That's how it will be stated in the RFP as well.
Okay. Solely trash collection, absolutely nothing to do with convenience centers, that is in the future, just to be clear. Okay.
That's great.
Any questions other than that?
That was a good question, because I remember that conversation that we had, that we were going to look at this, make a decision, and see how it went, whether some of the collection centers in the next five years need to be phased out or something, if we're doing so good on everything else. But yeah, it's a good, a good call. Please, please ask questions.
All right, so this is an action item, and I, what we are being asked to do today is to approve the special call meeting for March 20th.
And waive the irregularity.
And waive the irregularity from the spam.
Right. Move forward.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Fleischer with a second from Commissioner Ehrman. There's no further discussion, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we are.
Thank you.
You can't find anything?
Adjourned. What? I'm sorry. What, I can, you want me to come up with something extra?
Can't find anything else to stretch it out a little bit?
Have a happy lunch, everybody.